Support Hill. Okay, do we have any questions, comments on the agenda? Oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead first.
Okay, Kyle first.
So I emailed this earlier. I think we should rearrange the new business items. Uh, we've right now we've got capital improvements plan at the very beginning, which is kind of a big thing and I I'm sure that the audience might not want to sit through all that. So I think we should definitely move that to the back. Um, it also seems like the site plan approval for Millennium Place may be the quickest item. So maybe we should move that to the front.
We'll make that a in capital improvement, Steve.
Hmm, okay, so you're swapping A and B.
Okay, swap A and D.
The Hill and Roberts, is that open? Okay, now, Mr. Colbert, you have another.
Yep, so uh, under new business items, the Dexter Senior Center project. Um, that's my generation here. My firm has worked with AR Brower in the past. I'm certain that uh, participating in discussion in this project here, um, there won't be any issues, but I wanted to mention to understand that I have worked with AR Brower in the past and that you have active proposals with them. So if it's um, the opinion of anybody on this board, then I should abstain from that. I'd be happy to.
Okay, thoughts?
I don't see a company.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. But thank you for mentioning. I appreciate that. Okay, um, so there's just the one change to the agenda swi- switching. I um, speed V for items A under new business. Okay, um, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post none. The agenda is amended and approved. Okay, moving right along, public hearings. We have one public hearing scheduled for tonight. Uh, so probably the carrying of a special land use request at seven thousand one Dexter and Arda Road. Um, with that, we will go to staff. I think, is it Michelle first?
Actually, we're going to have the applicant come up and make their presentation and then we'll go through the reviews.
Right, perfect. Applicant, you'd like to step forward and make your presentation, please? You want to start a background, some background?
Um, my name is Katie. The order by these. Um, it is the end of the the building and there is now hoping to use with all basically impact. Um, and one half will be two, it's too big of a time. As well just begin up to ten minutes lead. Um, and this other units will be the place where there's the structures um, they go in and it'll be um, a small eating area, it's welcome by some food, no, no liquor, anything like that, nothing booked, everything will be prepared. Um, and it has there's tosses in the back. Um, some of the items that we will be improving on will be cleaning up the landscaping. Um, there's um, a little bit there. Uh, but then that will be then we'll um, another item, which is um, improving on the front facade. So since we are splitting the existing space into two, we'll need to create another end case. Um, one of which there's currently a large gable over the um, and we are basically copying that over the new. Okay.
Transfer to the
Everyone here can see that there are two. We can see that there are two gables um, on the front, the one on the left side is one right existing. And we're matching the existing materials or um, proposing two new sites in each of the gables that are larger. Um, so something that came up between um, our discussions and Michelle. Were the proposal of a outlaw closer to the Dexter and Arda Road. Um, and that is something that we are looking into to see if it would be feasible and if it would um, be worth the investment for Ben in the future.
So I'm sure everybody's aware of this building's in there and.
So could you introduce yourself? I think we know, but.
I'm Ben. Um, I'm sure everybody is aware of this. It's been there. It used to be a grocery store that subsequently went out of business around twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen. Uh, I took possession of the building at the beginning of twenty twenty. There were some restrictions, covenants that were did not allow the building to be used for certain reasons because it interfered with the other master plan of the the previous owner that were the developer of the building, which at the time was carnating, I believe. Um, subsequent to that, we've been able to remove some of those restrictions and the plan is to develop it into something that the city could actually benefit from. Which is a play structure, indoor playhouse, very similar to probably a younger version of an urban air. If you've ever been to one of those, like a sky zone with less trampoline, but more of what we call soft play. So soft play is things that have foam, foam pits, those type of things where younger children between the age of three and eleven can play in. So we're going to try to tear it in a way where you have the three to seven year old area. And then you have the art area and then you have the five to twelve year old area and then you have bounce houses in the back. Um, there won't be really a lot of there'll be food served, but there won't be a kitchen there. So some of the questions that were raised were what type of ventilation? Um, how will that be constructed? Some of their suppression systems. But the plan is to serve food, but serve more pizza, hot dog type of foods and serve more of pre-grad food and cooked food. Because we didn't want to create so many difficulties in doing those other things, but um, everything will pretty much be a padded structure on the right side of the building. On the left side, as you enter the building, there'll be more sitting areas for parents to be able to watch your kids play. There'll be a gated entrance into the play structure where every kid will check into the gate structure and walk into the play structure, which will be all padded. So there'll be less of a safety issue. And then obviously all the beams and everything will be wrapped and we'll update the structure inside to make it more modern of the play structure. On the other side of the building, um, there were current discussion with multiple instances, but the items, which is nineteen thousand square feet gets occupied by a retail or retail end user. Um, we have figured that out first because we need to get, obviously, the site plan approval for the use of the play structure first, so we can start working on getting that separated. And once that's separated, the idea would be to find another end user for the other buildings that would bring value to the community and not end up being kind of a vacant space. Um, unfortunately, when Bush has moved across the street, it created a difficulty with use of that space because you really can't have two grocery stores right across the street from each other. And the the deed itself, when it was set up, only allowed the restriction on using it as a grocery store. When I purchased it, took about a year to negotiate me bringing in a appliance store. But after that, we quickly realized that there's just not quite the population for pure for retail. It'd be better as a structure that brings in people from the harbor as well as from Dexter. Also from Chelsea and bring value to the community. So that's the reason for that. Um, I have, not personally myself, but I I have other commercial properties in Michigan. Um, I leased out spaces to companies that develop these now. Um, I offered them to come in with me on the project. The only concern was this, that's because most of them were from East Side. Closer to, you know, Troy, Metro Detroit, Royal Oak areas. So I I think I'm very capable of running this and being able to operate this in a very effective and safe and efficient way.
All right, thank you. Um, and if you want to go, you do have some slides. If you want to go through them rather quickly. I mean, we just had your presentation. Is it stuck? We could, um, so one, I I have a question while we're scrolling through that. Yeah, you mentioned the landscaping, so you you'd be bringing the site back into compliance with the landscaping then?
Yeah.
All the dead material.
Our idea is to improve the landscape. To remodel the structure or uh, the second within that require new exterior. The gable, my guess would be slightly smaller than the current gable because the current gable is very large in that structure. It's larger than some of the other gables down on the other side of the, but it'd probably be between a small gable and a the full size gable. And then we'd bring the sidewalk across and then we'd update all the landscaping on outside. Once it's like operating environment, we have foot traffic through there in a consistent basis, we're not going to want it to look at all like there's no one there.
Yes.
The the challenge is when you don't have a business and until nine months ago, when I got off the ability to open like operate a different business in that space, there was no business that could really succeed in the next size of building in the city of Dexter. So by getting off some of those agreements with the previous land whites owner, um, we're now able to find something that really fits into the city better.
Yeah, no, that's great. Um, and you, I noticed you're expanding the sidewalk area a little bit there in front of that, your second retail unit. Do you have any plans for any outdoor sitting seating or anything, or is it just strictly for extra circulation area?
Yeah, it's initially no, it's not for any outdoor speaking. We are planning for that to just give it a little bit more wider space because the the ability to see the other building is slightly affected by the trees that are on the side of Dexter and now we're crossing. So it's better to be able to get people to go around that curve and be able to either drop off at the curb without walking through the grass. So then we're we're going to try to expand that sidebar just slightly along that curve to give it a better access point to walk towards that building as well. Because it's the end cap unit and it's not as visible from the road because of how deep it is and the trees that kind of feed them. You know. Well, inside.
Um, okay, so I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to highlight in your presentation, or we can um, go into our rest of our staff reviews. Is there anything else you'd like to highlight?
So I think we've covered everything.
And and we may, we may have additional ques- questions, so we'll call you back up. Thank you. Okay, so at this time then, staff, Michelle, did you, yes, Tom?
Sorry for the interruption, but I just realized um, although we have a rather small firm, I hadn't understood that survey plan directly for this project. As of, as we roll through this, I do see that they did use a plan that we had prepared here in twenty twenty four, so I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Oh, you go the base.
The survey sheet.
The survey sheet.
I missed it. You still just now, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay, okay, thank you. It's over. Um, okay, so before then we'll launch into the staff review. Again, thank you.
Evening, I'm Megan Mass and Menach with Carla Wardman. We're the planning consultants for the city. Um, in terms of an overall, just want to note that the site is Zoned PUD. Um, and that has an underlying zoning of seat, the C one zoning district from the zoning ordinance in nineteen ninety eight. Um, at that time, indoor recreation and commercial indoor recreation or special land uses in the C one zoning district. And so in looking at this, we saw that the proposed indoor kids record play zone facility and operations were generally consistent with that use and that definition. So it is before you as a special land use. Um, being that it's here as a special land use decision, um, the master plan comes into play. Um, that subject site um, is planned as Dexter and our corridor. Um, and that, that the intent of that is to provide a mix of commercial office, high tech research and design service and residential uses as an entrance to the city as well as a transition area between the originally planted village area and the eastern portion of the city. Um, future appropriate uses in that future land use category and multiple family, no more than five stories, live work units, office, commercial uses clustered at the Dan Hobie intersection, which is overall development as part of um, automobile oriented uses such as gasoline stations, drive-throughs, vehicle dealerships, municipal offices and services. In our review, we listed a number of land use goals also from the master plan that would apply to this case. What we wanted to highlight is while the indoor recreation uses are not specifically listed as a desired use, um, they would advance the master plan goals, um, particularly those looking at the reuse of an existing buildings um, in bringing vibrancy and different and a diverse range of uses to um, this part of the city and economic development overall. Um, feel that it can be a positive addition to the mix of businesses in the Dexter Crossing PUD. Um, we did look at traffic generation, um, and we're looking at that and comparing what would be a kid's play zone or trampoline park to that of a commercial plaza, an overall shopping plaza, found that the traffic impact, it wouldn't be would be around the same. Um, and there might be a little bit of a difference in terms of when your peak hours are um, in terms of those operations. In terms of parking and loading, uh, total of one hundred and forty seven parking spaces are on the parcel. Um, they're required to have um, they're required to have one hundred and forty seven. The way we got to that number um, was at the vacant space, having that just a shopping center. And then looked at the proposed kids play zone facility as a similar use to the banquet room. Um, these are pool parking with the entire plaza. So there's another property owner. There's a whole variety of other businesses. Um, one of the things that you can look at is when there are two or more uses on the present, present on the premises, parking requirements are calculated for each use. Um, when they're not specifically, but they can be based on documentation um, that those specific uses happen at different times and they can be shared. Um, one of the interesting things um, with the site when applying the bicycle parking was that um, it required skate bicycle hoops. Um, which seems a bit overwhelming to us um, for the special land use proposal. However, um, I believe as um, Samuel has pointed out in her review, this is the plan you develop and you could ask an amendment to those numbers of bicycle hoops. One of your questions tonight would be what's the appropriate number to require? Um, there is an existing loading area in the rear, um, and that meets the zoning ordinance um, for required spaces. Um, in terms of trash removal, it wasn't provided any plans. Um, and we asked that a note indicating the method of trash removal, it's added. And I think the engineer had some things to add to to that as well. There are no changes proposed in site access or circulation. There is a five foot sidewalk, concrete sidewalk proposed through the rear of the building to the existing concrete sidewalk at the front, and that's proposed to be extended into the southern corner of the parking lot. Um, in terms of landscaping, because this is a reuse of a building, um, does not need to come up to current standards. Um, but the applicant has offered substantial landscaping in order to fill in and generally bring it back into compliance with what the original um, landscape plan was as well as we could assess that using the plans from nineteen ninety eight. Um, we also have noted that the applicant needs to provide a maintenance plan addressing how that landscaping and property upkeep would be completed. Um, in terms of lighting, there's no new lighting required. One thing also going back to the is that there is um, even in the north area of the of the drive out that extends to Carrington Drive. So the upper corner is in poor condition. That's been designated as a potential outlaw development on the site plan. Um, that would require an amendment to the PD, as Miss Daniels noted in her letter. Um, we would not payment be assessed, repaired, restripped if needed in accordance with section five oh eight and shown in the site plan. Um, or and associated for that work be included in the development agreement if a special land use is approved. If the applicant asks and the planning commission chooses to recommend that that area wait um, to be developed as an outlaw, that's possible, another possibility to look at. Um, again, that would require an amendment to the PD. Um, in terms of the special land use, um, all the standards are, we found that all the standards could be met. The one thing I wanted to note is um, the standard number three, that especially news will designate it constructive operated, maintained to be compatible with and not significantly alter the existing or intended character of the general facility. Vicinity in terms of consideration and there's a number of listing of impacts. Um, in your packet, there was an email from an adjoining property owner who noted that none of the other um, businesses in the entire plaza operate past nine PM. Um, and if you felt that they are proposal to operate until ten PM was an impact, you could actually, you could look at restricting those hours as a condition of approval. On page twelve, which is page forty two of your packet, um, we've noted um, some information that um, would need to would need to be submitted. Um, and also we would, we recommended um, conditions of special anti-use approval in terms of approval from the city engineer, GPW director, repair of damaged pavement and restructuring of the parking lots right on the site plan and then develop and in development agreement. A note on the site plan indicating how the trash will be removed and stored from on the site. Um, a landscape plan, and that's generally in terms of maintenance, um, be provided in compliance with section sixty six one five. And if any new lighting is proposed, a lighting play, a plan um, in compliance with section three point eleven.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we may call you back up for additional questions. Marcus.
Good evening, Marcus Beck with OHM. Well, as mentioned, this is an existing building, so the engineering is a little bit less than usual. Uh, we agree with everything Megan said about the um, damage areas and parking lot. Be clarified on the plan, those will be improved. And depending on what the applicant choose to do with the um, potential outlaw areas, as was mentioned, that may require some additional approvals. They go down that road. Uh, the main habit we had related utilities because the building will be split, will need to separate water and silver line. For both spaces. Uh, location that will need to be coordinated with EPW. And the dumpster, the question where and how many dumpsters, shared agreements with the dumpsters. Um, doesn't pack circulation, uh, does potentially impact where the loading zone should go. Um, and other things, so we are asking for that to be clarified at this stage as well. And I guess the other comment we had is as part of the parking lot improvements, just a general comment that areas of the lot are in poor condition that are hazardous, need to be repaired, special attention needs to be paid to the handicap accessible spaces and accessible route from those spaces into the building. So those actually require a little higher level detail. Um, maybe a little bit more than just a note on the plan. Some detail ready to make sure that the slopes are compliant. Or if I want to move those spaces, for example, to a more appropriate area. Um, the last comment I had was clarification on uh, how the stormwater system for the site works, the um, application was silent to that. Um, to my knowledge, there isn't any significant issues. Although um, because it's an existing site that's been there for some time. Maybe to be some maintenance system system. Get it back up to the original design standard so that it can all of this app can isn't proposing any new previous surface. If the system's underperforming, how it's originally designed, that should be addressed at this stage. But I have.
Thank you. Um, we have a fire inspector. Fire inspector reported or do we?
Chief Armstrong, are you prepared to give the report? Or is Ed going to give it?
I see we have one on the package. Or we could just queue them up if we have questions if they're not available right now.
I can, I can address it real quick for them.
Okay, sure.
Most of what um, um, the chief and Ed have uh, shown are things that would be dealt with during preliminary zoning compliance and building permit. So um, these, the information that they're requesting will have to be on those plans and we'll make sure that they are. If this goes forward.
Yes, good, thank you. Okay. So that concludes our staff presentations.
Or conclude your consultant presentations.
So I'm sorry.
That includes your consultant.
Consultant presentations, that's correct. So now we have our staff presentation to summarize it all up.
I will summarize it all up. Um, Marcus, Megan, um, both did a a great job getting through the detailed stuff. Um, I'm going to go um, just go over a few things really quick. Um, you do have a determination to put, uh, if the proposed indoor recreation advances your master plan in regards to the zoning. Um, it certainly could comply, um, but the applicant will need to satisfactorily address the issues that are cited in my letter as well as the consultant's letter and DAFD's letter. Um, and that has to be done on a revised site plan that's prepared, signed and sealed by a licensed engineer. Um, as far as compatibility, it's um, uh, it could be uh, again, excuse me, uh, with adjacent uses, provided the applicant either prepare, I'm sorry, repairs that north parking lot or as a condition of approval, um, an amendment to the Dexter Crossing Development Agreement to allow that outlaw. Uh, impact on overall environment, um, there should not be, provided that um, they're able to address the engineers' uh, comments and concerns. Um, again, it's going to be on the revised site plan. The impact on the public facilities shouldn't again have any unreasonable burden, um, provided the applicant does the same thing, provides that revised site plan that addresses the concerns. Um, the the traffic impact, it should not be. Excuse me, and the safety and welfare, again, the same thing. It's the revised plan addressing the concerns. Um, the special provisions in section fourteen thirty one specifically for commercial indoor, um, that the the principal and or accessory buildings or structures, housing, the use can't be closer than a hundred feet. Um, and to the best of staff's ability to scale that, it is not within a hundred feet. Um, all the uses have to be conducted inside a completely fully enclosed building that is being done or is proposed. Um, and then the building has to be soundproofed. The applicant's going to have to demonstrate um, that it is soundproofed or he will have to provide soundproofing. Um, your site plan comments are the same as I've already stated, a revised plan that's prepared, signed and sealed by a licensed um, engineer addressing all the uh, comments and concerns. Bicycle hoops is something you're going to have to determine what that number is. Um, if you think sixty eight is too many. And then there are, you've got um, the recommended actions with all of the different conditions. Um, if this is going to be recommended for approval, if it's recommended for denial, obviously you don't have those conditions. And if you don't feel that this is um, if you don't feel that this is um, if the information is sufficient, you would postpone.
Thank you. Okay. Now that's all of our staff and consultant reviews. So at this time, we open up the uh, public hearing for this item. That would be this item only. There's another opportunity for public comment on other items later on in the agenda. So for this special land use, we'll open the public hearing at seven thirty seven. Anybody I'd like to speak? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Ed, do you want to just identify that we did have two comments? Oh, written comments?
Yes, we did. I'm sorry, can you, uh, can you mention?
Yeah, page forty nine. And fifty of the packet. Page forty-nine and fifty of the packet. You'll just.
Yeah, mine.
Okay, we received two written comments, one from Lindsay Pelazolo, three five six oh Lexington, she was in support. And the other one, which our planning consultant addressed when she was giving her review is from Rob Shironda, I hope I've said that right. And I don't have an address for him.
Is that the adjacent or one property owners?
Wellington, six nine seven six Wellington, and generally supportive, but concerned about the hours of operation, and so that's something you guys need to discuss.
Hey, I'm not seeing anyone else step forward. Or online, wait. No, there's no one, but hey, so at that, this time we will close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine. So, Planning Commission is in discussion at this time, if we can have someone make a motion, please, we have our motions as identified by Michelle on page fifteen. Well, actually, they start on page fourteen of the packet. And then we can have some discussion and questions. Is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Hill?
I'm not going to read through this entire A motion because we'd be here all night. However, based on the information provided by the applicant staff, C W A, O H M and V A F D, in following a public hearing conducted by the planning commission on April first, April Fool's Day, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission finds the application for special land use, T S P S two-three dash zero 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 one for indoor commercial recreation located at seven zero zero one Dexter and Arbor Road, zero eight dash zero eight dash zero eight dash two hundred dash zero one three, zero, zero one three meets the standards for special end use in section eight point oh three and the specific use provisions for self. Sorry, did I skip something?
It was me, I have the wrong thing. Provisions in section fourteen thirty-one. Just don't say the use.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And recommend approval to city council. Further, the planning commission takes the action subject to the following conditions. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
You can just say the conditions listed in staff's report, starting on page fourteen.
Okay. So move to, there's support. Whatever, it's perfect. Okay, so at this time, we are in discussion if there is a couple of items that we do need to make determinations from, as was identified by staff and consultants. So, but let's open for some discussion at this time, we'll see where it goes. Yes.
Yes, so I have a question, how many parking spaces are with this parcel?
Total parking spaces? Or just this parcel?
This parcel.
Hang on just a second, because I have that in my, I think Megan said it was one forty-seven.
It's, yeah, that's why it says in the report, one forty-seven.
One forty-seven.
So one forty-seven divided by twenty is seven point three five.
I'm sorry.
One forty-seven divided by twenty is one thirty, it is seven point three, so that's seven bike groups, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure what you were talking.
Yeah, I wasn't sure exactly.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where sixty-eight bike groups came from.
Yeah.
What, that would be like. Well, they had a parking structure.
Yeah, that's.
But, but sixty-eight times twenty is like over a thousand parking spaces.
Whatever.
Okay, right, right. It might be six point.
So is there, do you have a comment on that?
Only, well, it's hard to actually nail down a number, but it would seem to me they had a dozen space parking somewhere that would be planning. It is a recreation space. Kids might be biking.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, yes, I agree, we're in the right ballpark. You know, but parent, two parents come up with two kids, there's four spots already gone, so I think, yeah, somewhere between twelve and twenty. Especially if this is like for kids in the age group where like riding bike is like the best thing ever.
Right, and it's for the community.
I don't know if a school has that many. I think the ordinance would, if you took their parking space, the ordinance says they need seven. So, I, I, if we go to a dozen, I think that's for me that.
Yeah, I would want a dozen, but if, the thoughts, I, I, but I would, I would agree that I think this is a destination. But a question for the applicant, have you thought through where to put the bicycle? Because that's sometimes an issue, and I think, again, you don't want to necessarily put it on your grass or anything else like that, so. And you, you don't necessarily have to answer it now, I guess, if you haven't thought through it.
I thought through it, I mean, I, I don't think putting it on the grass would make a lot of sense because that would be closer to the other building side, it probably be closer to the concrete that separates the two separate structures. The whole space not far enough where it's not so congested, where it impedes any traffic flow.
Yes.
But I, I don't think you can put it on the grass because it would go into the second section of the zoning.
Right.
And not as close to the building that I keep on. It, it had to be against the wall, most likely to the right side of the entrance and separated enough where you could put all spaces, six, six and six.
Okay, and then I think if and, and I would agree, I mean, I, I think hopefully in the best case scenario, twelve wouldn't be enough, I mean, especially if you've got people with, you know, pulling bicycle trailers and things like that nowadays, but, um, and I assume obviously it's in your own best interest if people start piling bikes up on the outside of that, because that is a concern I have too, is the egress in, in and out of there, because people start putting their bikes everywhere if there is not enough, or you've just got to make sure the clearance is there.
I think the clearance shouldn't be good just because that side of the building actually has a little bit more space popping out than the rest of the whole plaza. But I think if we needed adding spaces, obviously there will be to add another six at a time, but I think fall would be a good starting time to see if we need more space.
Okay, thank you, I agree, so twelve, it's, if any, you're fine, you're. Yes.
You, neighborhood, four kids.
Yes. Yes, which is what I'm hoping, so again, I'm hoping twelve won't be enough, but again, I also understand from the applicant, if, if bikes start piling up under trees and everything else like that, they will find a way to add more.
So my suggestion would be, if, when you make your, your revised motion or amend your motion, when you identify the hoops, you also identify that if there's an additional need, whatever wording you want to use, you can make that part of your motion that extra hoops will have to be provided.
Or could, could you say based on the zoning administrator's determination or something?
No.
Okay, basically, okay, good.
Yeah, I, I, what? I don't think we should have a motion that reaches into the future, I think saying twelve and leaving up the applicant to decide how to run his business is, is pretty sane. I, I, I don't know, we have a motion that says, w- we, we will check in on your business every six months and see how you're doing and count the bikes and count the kids and then that's changing what the office does again.
But if it was notice that
Right.
They're piling up, having an additional condition of your approval.
Okay, so whatever, I mean, you could think of your amendment if, if you want, I mean, right now we have twelve at least as the number. So, additional, and then since it's your motion, if you want to amend it, with additional determinations, we need on this. Oh, regarding the outlot, item one, so I guess I'm a little confused. Maybe it's yeah, so I guess if they'd have to amend, so what exactly, you're just asking us if we would support amending the development agreement to basically allow an outlot in the future?
So when Dexter Crossing was, the P U D was approved. On the Carnegie portion, there are two outlets that were approved with that, and that's all baked into the site plan. If this is something that planning commission is okay with identifying that as an outlot, condition of approval would be that they amend the development agreement, come back to you for that to be made official. And then whenever he gets a developer or somebody wants to develop in that state, that also would come before you.
So does it? Either way, would have to come back before us, but does this
in two separate cases?
Right. Okay, and I guess that applicant, if you could address, do you, you said you were looking into the prospects of that outlot? Do you have a, any other information you wish to add at this time that may help us in deliberations regarding that?
Obviously, the apartment structure has been there for twenty-five, twenty-six years now. Last year, we repaved approximately thirty percent parking lot. And in some conditional agreement with the new tenant owner, we gave them some of the property that was more directly in front of their current tenants in that structure, but the front where it's closest to Dexter Crossing is quite far away from the building itself. It's very difficult for someone to park three hundred feet away, at least I can walk, I can walk in the snow, they're going to go play with my kids. So most of the structure I would keep will be, the apartment will be utilized, easily improved closer to the building and the outlot can serve the city probably better to find a tenant or someone who could utilize that space more effectively than just having a parking that's so far from the building. So my, my thought would be that would be a benefit for the city as well as benefit for myself not to have to constantly repair or re- replace a structure that is really not being used as frequently as the closer structures. Which I, for the parking discussion, my plan would be to repair and fix the closer structures, we strive, re- redo all the things that are necessary for the, the parking spots that are closer to the building, including the handicap spaces and then try to allow the, the spaces that are closer to the road possibly be developed at a later time.
So I guess the only question I have, though, even if we determine it as an outlot, are you saying you're just going to let it deteriorate? Because it could be ten, fifteen, twenty, it could never be developed, so the so, because our thing here is an or, like, either we show it as an outlot or you repair it, but couldn't it be both?
Not to repair that issue, that's, that's my, where I can repair the parking lot that's closer and more effective to the use of the building. And then within a two-year time period, try to find a use for the outlot that would serve the purpose of the structure that's closer to the road. Instead of repairing it right now and then still trying to get it out, I'm wasting a lot of money necessarily to tear it off. So I, I like a timeframe, maybe like a twen- eighteen to twenty-four month timeframe to try to find a tendency for that outlot. I, I think I can do that. Because some of the reasons why the other side hasn't, because they have tenants in front of them that would oppose the use of those outlets. I don't have that, I like a much taller structure, it doesn't affect me as much on the end destination versus the destination that you need to go to because you brought it into the plaza itself. So, being that the place structure, I'm expecting people to come from the harbor and other places. I, I don't think it's going to affect me quite as much as the Jets Pizza, you know what I'm saying, or, or Subway that would be impacted by having a restaurant directly in front of me. So I think there can be kind of a middle ground there where if I'm given enough time, I can try to find a use for it without having to pour a bunch of money into it, where it might not be the use if I find a tendency.
Okay, and, and I think though, I, I think to be clear, and I know we have a couple of commissioner comments, but I I'm not necessarily concerned about your timeline of whether it takes that long, because the other outlets can sit there. I think it's just the, and again, I don't want to see you improve a prop, because I agree that parking lots never used, it's never going to be used in but I'm trying to think of a fine line here between like letting it just deteriorate, because it looks horrible deteriorating like that. Or having you invest the money, and I don't necessarily know if closing off that is the idea, because then that might look worse, but.
Is there a, be a timeline that's acceptable to try to find a tendency for, and if it passes that timeline, then I would be required to improve or replace that parking lot? That way it gives me some time not to spend and invest the money into infrastructure that most, I hope will have.
Right, was to be removed, okay.
No, we have to be removed.
Okay. Okay, thank you, yes?
And if, if that was, if the timeframe was something you were interested in exploring, you could put up a maintenance bond. So that if it didn't, that, not, not a cash bond. But a maintenance bond, an insurance policy, basically. So that if, if you didn't find a tenant and it had to be done, and he doesn't do it.
Okay, and I don't want to see, um, spend a lot of money, right, improving a surface that's going to be ripped out. I think Kyle chat, chat had an issue, and then Karen, Kyle didn't want to go first?
I mean.
Sorry, I can't see.
I'm generally in agreement, this lot is pretty vestigial. And, you know, maybe just patching some really bad potholes would do the trick for now. You know, you know, how bad is it? I guess I haven't looked that.
My question would be does anybody use that parking lot or any of them?
Don't think.
Most of the time it's people that leave a car there for
Right.
Putting it for sale.
If that is the case, and I'm always in favor of getting rid of parking if we can, I can just get rid of it, there's way to fill it another time. I mean, if it's being used, that's one thing, but I've never seen it used, but I'm not.
That's who I was thinking, too, it's the, I don't know, but the expense of ripping it out just in leaving it right, rather than repairing it, so that.
So, I made a
Sure.
So we did, we better.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, Michelle.
So we, we did repair the parking structure, we actually repaved it and put a two-inch filler on top of it with the idea that this could be a possibility later. We've already spent about sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars repairing the front closer to the road. And then we repaved and redug out the whole middle section that carries through Carrington, went into the plaza itself. That added an expensive around sixty-four thousand dollars, and then we restripped and resurfaced the front. Now, the front still needs a lot of work, a hundred percent, it needs to be a lot of, a lot of portions of it need to either be sealed, remoted, or just torn out and redone. And I'm willing a hundred percent to do that, because long term, that's what needs to be done for that, and it'll provide conditionsality over the next fifteen, twenty years for the building. The area that's closer to the road, it's really challenging for me, and I understand it from everybody's perspective, because I see waste. It's wasted space, but if I dig it out right now, it doesn't look good for the plaza, and I'm sure my co-landlords would not like that. But at the same time, if I pour more money into it, I don't think there's any use for it. So my ideal situation is finding someone who could use it, and there's been a lot of people coming to me to, to use that space. It's just coming up with a timeline to be able to execute a game plan to use that space without having to do more work on that, just a patch, patch, patch constantly.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so, um, should I redress your question or your comments?
Well, the only thing, I'm just confused, are you going to build a building there? Is that what it means to find another tenant?
Well, eventually, yes, that idea, but that would be a site plan that would, that would come back to us at that.
I don't think we should set up a situation where he's under pressure to find somebody to build something there. That is too valuable of, of space in this city.
And we're going to talk about all that.
Whatever, you know.
I agree, I don't think we need a time.
So, math to play.
Yeah, so. It's just whether or not we're okay with the concept of an outlot in there, and then obviously, we're just okay in that idea of the concept, anything else, the even when they come back from the plan, it's going to have to look at the whole site planning again, anyway. So this is just enabling, I think, giving him a little bit of a step up to be able to market the site, probably, maybe. And, and so this is kind of like the first step, because he doesn't even have an outlot right now. So I guess that, that's a key. That's a good takeaway from this, is that like, we, we've known about the other outlets along there that periodically one has come in for something, but but I think that this site does, well, I know that this site does not have it, so we're just like basically creating a parcel now. If, and we're not even necessarily doing that, I'm just saying we will be okay with them doing that. So, but that would be it. Yes, Tom?
I, I would say I would be fine if the applicant just patched it and it wasn't a hazard. So minor patching, no restriping, no resurfacing.
Yep, don't even have to stripe it.
Yeah. For, yeah.
I agree.
You're talking about the northern left.
Correct. Yes, yes, the northern, and, and again, I, I think the way you presented your, your business plan and everything, I, again, I have some confidence knowing that, right, it's in your own best interest to make the site look good, as the site was previously, and I see that you have invested some money in redoing that that main access road, which that kind of leads from, not Lexington, Carrington? Yes, from, uh, from that street, which gets the majority of the traffic for other businesses, not even your site, so. Um, okay, so, we have. Um, okay, so, we have, um. Did we have any other determinations?
So, where does that leave us motion-wise?
So, it just, we would amend the, the motion, we added to what, we clarified that twelve, twelve parking spaces? And then, yeah.
Bicycle, bicycle.
Bicycle, oops, um, so then, right, would, I guess as a. Are we fine with the development agreement being amended to create the outlaw? And then, like, we don't have to address, we don't have to even address a timeline, if, again, personally, I don't, I don't feel like timeline, it's. They're gonna do it for their interest of the business.
So it would be the Dexter Crossing Development Agreement shall be amended to create an outlaw in the northern parking lot. And what Tom, what Tom said about, um, it being patched. No stripping.
Right, yep.
Okay. Like, this, it's, alright, so what we're doing is we're gonna create. A lot about the size of that building, and granted, it's a big building, it takes up, you know, a big chunk of that strip. That's gonna be just a standalone lot.
Correct, yep.
Well, doesn't that then make difficult the idea of any kind of cohesive development of that area? And I, I think that's a big mistake for us to, you know, go through this and do it. At this point, I think that takes, we should, we should really be thinking through, okay, what's a sensible way? To, to zone that area and develop. And, you know, and to have, you know, a standalone, okay, and then does the pharmacy get to have a lot? Well, their lot's not very big, but, I mean, I, I just think we're setting ourselves up for, um, you know, a pretty chaotic. Future development of that area, and, and I mean, we talked about this more than once in this group, that. That whole parking lot is, it's insane how empty it is, you know, and. That maybe more parking lot is not good, and some of it should go to some other use, which would fit with what he wants to do, but I'm, what I'm objecting to is that. I can develop that this would set up.
Can I make a comment?
Wait, no, no, I'm sorry, not yet.
Let's not have that be part of this, but generally, we support doing something like that. But I don't, I think it's premature to put this as part of this whole process.
I agree.
Although generally, we like the idea of doing something there, we wanna make sure that it happens with some type of input here.
I mean.
Which means, let's take that out of this.
So, well, we'll have to ask, who, who, Mr. Hill, it's his, I mean, I.
Well, I think Tom's suggestion is very practical, okay, if the potholes are getting, at least, you film, but that's it. You know, as long as it's, but not have to keep it, you know.
So that's for sure that we've agreed on that, I think the only question is the outlaw, whether or not, I mean, personally, I don't necessarily have an issue, because I do have. Strong, uh, concerns about design always, I plan on projects and making sure it's compatible, but we, we can do that, we're only creating a parcel line here. I don't think that that in any way precludes, uh, connecting it.
You actually think so.
Right, if anything, I think we're hoping there.
You're trying to do on them.
We still go through site plan, but, okay, sorry, wait, let, Tom, Tom?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, we're, we're, we're basically agreeing that, that long-term. More part, leaving the parking as it is, is not something that we're thrilled about. And that, that the opportunity to have a future outlaw there, that develops there, is something that we're in favor in. That's all we're saying, there, there, there's nothing else to this, and the fact is, that developing in those outlots is challenging. The fact that, I think Oxford tried to do that on the other corner for years and wasn't successful, isn't an indication of that. So, I, I, I think just saying that we're receptive, the idea, we agree that having acres of parking out there. Looks kinda ridiculous, and that, that whatever is done here, I would say it, given that our ordinance as it is, is gonna be an improvement. I, I think saying that something like, well, if, if, if Oxford doesn't develop something on the other side. That's cohesive with this development, then maybe he shouldn't do that, we should just keep the parking the way it is, I, I don't think it's a good strategy. It, it's, it's, uh, mixing two ownerships together that are not related, and would unfairly, I think, uh, burden the applicant.
I think, um, so, I don't, I wanna make sure that we also are getting focused on the special land use item, and I know we can start wrapping up our discussion, cause we've. Been going on this for a while, but, um. Again, the nature of, we focused a lot on the outlaw, of course, which was, which is important, but also regarding the special land use. And the standards there, I, I don't, I don't know if there's any other comments specific to that, um. Seems like from our consultant reports that, I mean, personally, again, I, I'm in support of the special land use being granted, I, I think. Like you said, it's gonna be a destination kind of thing, hopefully it is a successful destination, and if anything, it'll help all the other bas- businesses within that complex. We mean not all of them, but restaurants, everything, so I think it, it's a. Uh, uh, yeah, and then obviously, we put something to be in that space and to activate it, and this helps you do the other part. So, as far as that special land use, is, are there any concerns regarding the special land use, yes, or comments regarding it, yes?
Sure, so back to, uh, the comment about closing time.
I, I am in favor of the nine P M.
Oh, yeah, then that, I mean, I don't really care, but.
Yeah, for the age range that this is, and. Was it true that everybody else is closed out there in that lot?
Well, but, but that's not a risk, but they can stay open. I think there's nothing in the, the ordinance that says they have to close it up, so I mean, that's only likely, cause then one of the, a business could move in at the end of the thing and be open. Till midnight, I, we don't have any. Well, true, you're right, so not saying that we couldn't do it in that, but I'm just saying, I think basing it on what the other strip mall occupants has.
I, I get what you're saying. The thing to remember is, it's up to you to decide if the hours of operation. Are, are something that needs to be considered as part of the special use criteria. It was brought up, I, I know you wanna talk, it was brought up by a resident, it was a public comment, and that's why it's addressed. Has been addressed, you have to determine, is it really a special land use?
Yeah, if we're, if we're silent on it, then it. Like, we don't have to make a determination, but if there are concerns, you're absolutely right, it's a special land use, you can put a, a, a restriction on there, Tom?
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, we should be looking at hours of operation in the context of zoning in, in our ordinance. I, I don't think we should be just arbitrarily deciding for the applicant what, what is reasonable hours for him to operate. Or that Jet's Pizza isn't open till, you know, they're not open till nine thirty, so why does he need to be open till ten? That's not, that's not the context of the ordinance we should be looking at. Wh- wh- i- if there's a compelling reason related to traffic, or health, safety and welfare, or something like that, that's a different situation. If there's something related to a school, or nearby residential, or lighting, or noise. If this was a bar next to some, uh, a residential area, then hours of operation might become a zoning issue, but I. With, with a, an operation that's entirely internal, I don't see how this could possibly, uh, have anything, you know, our. Our role could have anything to do with hours in, in the case of this applicant.
Okay, so I think, unless there's any final thoughts on that, what, we do have our, our motion, do you wanna add something?
One last comment on that, was the concessions issue, which was the neighbor's boss, so. And I know that's been addressed, there won't be any alcohol served, should that start while getting. Flowed in our motion?
If they were going to do that, if it became something that they decided they wanted, this would be coming back to you, because that's another special one.
So, as it stands now, then the only thing we're really amending is the number of bicycle loops, is that correct?
Well, it, I don't know, the, the motion that Chad made, it did include the amended out, the, did include the outlaw and a notice. So, so that wasn't, but again, and I understand that you guys, or you may have concerns about that, but that's a motion that I think we vote on. But of course, you don't have to vote for it, but, so that's what's, what's in there, and, um, the twelve, although if. If there was a concern regarding specifically, like, I, I would hate to derail the special land use if there's a concern regarding the outlaw. So I think that it's, it's, there maybe, could we split a motion if there's concerns that.
You can split that motion however you, however you want.
I don't, I don't know what, what, where the, a- again, because I know the two are linked there, and I don't know that they're necessarily, if there's some concerns regarding the outlaw. I don't wanna necessarily shoot down the special land use because of those concerns.
I mean, if. If, if you have a problem with the outlaw, you're basically saying we like the parking the way it is, we need to keep that. So I, I don't, I don't understand the, the outlaw thing at all.
Well, that, I mean, to summarize, yes, if you guys, you, would you like a sep- separate motion, actually, well, we'd ask Mr. Hill?
I don't know how we would address two separate options, we can't decide me on that.
Well, we could just have a motion basically to create a Dexter Crossing Development Agreement amended for an outlaw. And then.
Period.
Period, I. Yeah, and, and then the rest of the wording could be.
Could it be changed to maybe amended to create? I, I, you know, I.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I just feel like we're creating a lob on the fly.
I think we should wait until. Fix that, so. So I think if we, if you, Michelle, we can create two separate, I mean, are you?
Well, the question's gonna be, if there isn't consensus for the development agreement portion.
Correct.
Then you strike that from the motion, and it's just filling the potholes, um, in that northern parking lot, but not striking it. If there is consensus of the majority that. Yeah, let's, let's have the applicant amend the development agreement to, so that an outlaw can be created. Then you would can leave it in. Well, just as simple, how would you?
It, but I, true, but if we leave it in, my concern is that people don't want that outlaw created, vote against especially and you stand that.
Exactly.
Cause it's one motion. We, we put, we bought, we're boxing. They have to.
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't we just vote on the motion as it is, and then if it votes down, then we can have a new motion, and then.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that, I was trying to say, but. Yes, yes, we could do that, I guess, and then if it fails. Remove that, um. Okay, no, no, what do you think, yes?
Are you under an obligation, I, I don't know how the ownership.
Sorry, the applicant, yes.
This is structured, are you under obligation as part of being, as being an owner in that strip? To maintain kind of certain portions of the.
So initially, no, the, we had an easement agreement on the structure that required the current. Landowner also to help us maintain our parking structure. For me to get the removal, that's what we negotiated for a year, where I would be able to use the building for any purpose that I so chose. I had to remove their requirements to help me re- repair the parking structure. So, that was a negotiation that took a year, now we're at the point where we can actually do something with the building that is more beneficial for the city. Previously, Oxford did not care, because they were planning on selling the structure. Carnegie doesn't wanna spend the money on the parking structure, just like no one else wants to spend on the front, because it's not usable for anybody. So it's become kind of an albatross and everybody to try to figure out what to do with the parking structure. My proposal is to come up with a solution long term, but not, I mean, I ended in here, because I was worried that the parking structure would delay. My special use proposal for the building, but if we wanted to separate that, I can come back and. For another meeting in the future, and then apply for, you know, an amendment for the, the part, parking and subsequent outlaw.
Okay, thank you.
Why can't we just strike, just strike number one? Okay, and then, that's not, you know, that's when you and your neighbors, I guess.
Yeah.
To figure out what level of quality needs to be maintained there, and we just stay out of it, and then when the day comes that. There's a kind of, you know, that you're not scrambling for a tenant, I'm gonna put it that way, I don't want you to say, thank God, I've got Jiffy Lube, I really don't. You know, and, and that's what this kind of concerns me, and so, that's why I don't want it to be created. You know, on, on the fly.
Okay, so.
So I'd like to just straight.
So, right now, though, the motion sta- it does stand in the motion, so do you wanna remove that?
No, in, in that particular regard, the or part of that number one, or the applicant shall repair the north parking lot. Could stay.
And he's agreed to do that.
Yeah, yeah, in other words, the creating an outlaw can be removed.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine, if you, if you amend the motion.
Okay, so we just, he could fill potholes if he wanted, but he doesn't have to regrade it and.
Right, right, we've got that clear of what the limited improvements to, to that, that, right. Okay, alright, so that's, okay, so then that simplifies it, okay, so, it, you're, what's going? What you're doing now is removing the Development Agreement Shall Be Amended, and basically just leaving in the repair of the northern parking lot.
Yes.
And we've gone to twelve bicycle loops, uh, from sixty-eight, and I believe that was the last determination. There were no other concerns, I believe, that we had to address, correct, Michelle, you know, we're covering everything, I vote, right? Eventually, okay. Do we get everything?
You got everything.
Well, okay, wow. Any other final thoughts? Okay. Are you guys ready for a vote? Okay, so we're clear, I hope we're voting, everybody, okay, um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Phillips?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Covert?
No, no.
Oh, sorry. Hill?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Thank you, thanks. Thank you. Okay, moving right on, I shuffled my agenda in there. There we go. Alright, pre-race citizen participation, we have it on tonight, reports of officers. Chairman report, I was just gonna, uh, mention also, well, we only have one student here today, but if you, since we're probably gonna be going a little bit longer, if you wanted to. Re- recuse yourself, or, you know, at any time, that's obviously fine, um, and as well as other planning commissioners, I was gonna mention a break, but it seems like. Kind of bring some of that right now.
We should let Tom know.
Oh, yes, and Tom, is, Kyle, could you, is Tom back there, could you?
He probably fell asleep, well.
Might have, you, we were there a little bit longer. Tom, can you see him? Karen, did you see Tom back there?
No.
Tom, oh, oh, is he, okay. Yeah, he might have fallen asleep. Okay, let's see, uh. You know, report, yep, uh, planning commissioners, anything, well, we're waiting for Tom. Although, wait, actually, maybe we'll pause the meeting for a minute, while staff gets.
There he is.
There's Tom.
We lost Karen.
We missed you, but we lost Karen, looking for Tom somewhere. Oh, here's, he's here. But now we lost Karen. Alright, well, okay, alright, we'll wait, um, in it, uh, at least until Michelle gets.
Do reports of officers.
Yep, well, you did mine, basically, yep, no, do we have any other planning commissioner items to share? We're doing reports. Nothing between us three? Good, and then we'll just go straight to.
Does Michelle have one?
Yeah, I think so. So she's. Michelle, um.
And two seconds.
Yep, when you're ready.
So, the online audience is not seeing the presenters. I am not sure why that, why the camera isn't working, and all I can say is I apologize for that. It should be.
The, the sound is working.
The sound is working, but the camera isn't, so.
Okay, well, that's what, um, okay, so I think if you're ready, we can do your, your community development report.
Um, my community development report is gonna be short and sweet, hopefully. There will be a proposal coming in front of you, probably in the next couple of month, months, for development on the outlaw on the Carnegie side.
Interesting. I'll look forward to that.
It'll be beautiful.
Okay, I can leave the center.
And they, what I will say is I will caution you to. While the proposal that comes through might be more drive-through oriented. It is allowed, and as much as we would like to see something different sometimes. Please be mindful of that.
Yes, good reminder. Okay, um, with that.
You want the Millennium Place Final Site Plan Extension?
Yeah, well, we are gonna do citizens wishing to address the commission, and then the Millennium, so, um, at this time, we have. Uh, any citizens wishing to address the commission, you have five minutes, like to step forward, state your name and address, speak on any item. Not seeing anyone, I don't see any hands online, okay. Um, old business, non-new business, so we moved the Millennium Place. Extension up to item A, so, Michelle?
Yep, I'm trying to. Yep, I'm trying to find my letter, cause we removed the packet. Seconds, please. All right. Um, perhaps you should have the applicant come up first.
I'm sorry?
The applicant, Mr. Campbell, so he can explain what he was asking for.
Sure.
And then I'll quickly go through mine.
Step forward, say your name and address again and give us a brief intro. What, you're ready?
Yeah, Campbell, um, representing Martha Campbell Development Company. And the uh extension for the Millennium Place, uh, P and D Site Plan Extension. Masking the planning commission to, uh, forward a recommendation to the city council to approve the extension. For the uh Millennium Place Site Plan.
Yep, very safe. I assume you're still trying diligently to try and get it built, correct?
This environment is strong.
All right, all right, well, hopefully see how this goes tonight. So thank you, we may have questions for you.
So the um, the, uh, Mr. Campbell explained his request. You'll remember that this is a three-story, twenty-three-unit urban residential development. Um, targeted at uh active adults and working professionals, and it's on the properties at seven nine five six and seven nine six zero Grand Street. Um, in my review, I provided you the conditions of approval that you recommended to council in which council granted. That was um, that was done on um. Excuse me, on March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, the final site plan, which also a copy of that is in your packet. Um, the revision date was April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, satisfied all those conditions and was stamped approved on August thirtieth. The final development agreement was um finally approved for execution last year, uh, but it has not yet been executed. So, um. Uh, there are no changes, uh, it is the same plan that was approved and um. The good news is even with the zoning change, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't change anything. So, um. The motion uh is as it's put on my review and I'll answer any questions you've got.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any questions or if not, do we have a motion? There is motion on page three eighty-four. So Michelle, while some of these debating about a mo- motion, um, I have a question of. Is this something that could be done administratively by staff in the future? Because if there's no changes proposed, it, it, it seems like. Kind of, you know, either way, like when you would, and there, and there is, is there any limit to the amount of extensions they can get? And they have to bring the site up to code, as you indicated.
Right.
To grant an extension, so.
Um, we could look at an amendment to the ordinance to clarify those kinds of things if you wanted to do that. Um, there just isn't the mechanism currently.
So I, if we, if there's a list of, again, it's just my idea right now, but I just think if, if there's a list of items that we could have for discussion of zoning or code changes, this would seem to be one. Because if there's nothing that changes within the development.
I understand.
Yeah, it's kind of seems pointless, and I think for the most part, we would um tend to support that, but, but that's just my idea, so if it can be brought up for future discussion, yes, Mr. Phil?
Um, I'll make a motion.
Okay, perfect.
Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, the planning mission finds that PA SPX. Twenty-four dash zero 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 one Final Site Planner for the Millennium Place Plan Unit Development. Um, revision dated April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two meets the requirements of section tw- twenty-one point zero six one recommends approval. To City Council.
Okay, who, Phillips? Support, support Covert? Any discussion on that? Go great project. Okay, I hope it goes through. Yep, good luck, um, okay.
Can we ask one question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. uh Phillips, you did um want the conditions that are listed added, correct?
Uh, yes, to with the, the two conditions uh included, yes, please.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I assume that's okay. Is that okay with Covert? Yes. Thank you. Okay, um, seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Phillips?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Hill? Kowalski?
Yes. Hey, go forth and build. Thank you. Okay, all right, moving right along, back to the regular scheduled agenda, item B, the Pelham PUD Final Site Plan. Okay, so are we gonna go with some consultant?
We're going to start with the applicant, like we did before.
We should be biased. Okay, applicant, that makes sense.
Yep, applicant will make his presentation and then we'll go to consultant reviews and staff review will wrap it up.
All right, perfect, so uh. Will you, if you mind, step forward, state your name and address, or state your name again. For the record, please.
Jeff Mahaney, representing the Pelham LLC. Um, here with me today is Josh Bloom, Kelly Anderson, our other partner, could not be here. I promise you, she's here in spirit. Um, first of all, just want to thank everyone here tonight um for helping us get through this process as far as we've come. It's been over a year um since we conceived of, of, of coming up with this development. We're extremely excited about it and happy to get it to this next level. Um, we also want to thank the community in general, um, not only the people that have supported the project. But uh recently getting a lot of outreach about people wanting to potentially make this their home. There's a lot of excitement and I'm just happy to have the continued uh community support. We really appreciate that. Um, you're, you're all very familiar with the project, um, the two-phase development uh with two buildings. Uh, along Creekside as well as the development uh and sort of um reinstalling the creek back to its uh original condition. Um, we've got all of our consultants here tonight, civil engineer, um, landscape architect, and our architect as well. Um, to speak on any items, any issues you might have. Uh, we're really hoping for an approval um tonight, and we're happy to work with staff, as we've always been happy to work with staff, community, and with the board. Uh, to make sure that um we make this the best development that we can. So I would like to, at this time, uh, ask our architect to step up and speak a little bit about some of the materials that we're using for the project this time around. And also just to mention our attorney's assets dialed in as well, if anything comes up in reference to the development agreement.
Thank you.
My name's Adam Poppersmith, I'm with Studiody, we're the architecture firm working with the Pelham Development Group. Um, one of the items that was brought up in the review by Fordman, and that's in the uh. Type of approval process, knowing that this is PD, is a quest for materials that would be on the building. Uh, we've looked at the building and context of the surrounding area and uh the opportunity to uh create a unique and a uh. Attractive building for the uh community and the city. Uh, so the building consists of uh a few primary uh materials. Um, mostly a composite uh panel system, uh, we have a dark color here, you'll see. Dark iron ore color, um, base of the building consists of a. Of a block that is an integrated color and then also a brick that will uh continue first three levels of the building. Uh, the exterior being uh black window trims and then also uh some small amount aluminum trim uh throughout, you know, flashing and. Uh, closing the building. Uh, there would be, the balconies will have a uh. Rubber paper system that'll be consisting of the colors, you'll see that here. And then the main entry on the building closest to uh the street will have a stone entry that is similar uh in stone. To the existing. Tunnel, the tunnel tunnel next to it and uh the stream intention to kind of incorporate that into the building. So we want to make sure that um we address those. There's any, but we also have physical samples of the materials, if that's something that you wanted to, uh, take a look at.
Yes, uh, so what is the gray metal, the gray panel made from?
It's a composite system, um, like a uh hardy board.
Okay, it's been fiber, okay, thank you.
Uh, installed in a, a baton, like a, a board and baton type system.
Thank you, thank you, um. Okay, thank you for now, we may have additional questions, so thank you. Yes, Michelle?
Are you done? Did you want your lines made for you to come up with them?
Yeah, Jerry. Yeah.
You might as well get all the stuff.
Oh, sure, yep. Thank you. If you could introduce yourself.
Uh, Jerry Sostowski, I'm a French student landscape architect for Washington Engineering. So, as you recall, you know, we have uh. Quite good pavement outside, not because we'd want to, but fire department needs an access to our building, so what's, we're left with, we're. Real precious and we're basically uh using. Trees and shrubbery, you know, is behind the building and shrubbery that we're using is uh. Just located at what we turned into a space, it's like entrance in the building, there's a pad in this area. And then uh as far as ground covers, so um, we're using green types and crown members. Round building, not full season domestic lawn, but rather um assault blended outside of the street. Primarily full salt grass, that's to withstand any kind of road salts, then there goes to the. Buffalo grass, which uh. Tolerates heavy uh sun and it kind of maintains itself between four and six inches. And then towards the back, uh, we're using uh this referred to as micro clover, and that's. Been a pretty successful thing on the east coast for the last decade. Uh, there's no reason why it can't work here in the shade and situation, so. Um, that leads us to the uh, you can see it right here, these images, these are. When you come to the shoreline, uh. The, there's permits required, but the shoreline itself is enough. So Eagle doesn't have any jurisdiction there. The only place they have jurisdiction is where the stormwater. Outlets are to uh Mill Creek. And that's a pretty small area, but if you look at these pictures, uh, that's what's there right now, you've got. Uh, severe impoundness, there's a lot of concrete debris, there's um. Plant material is just seedlings, a black oak is just in the basis, and uh. Soil testing tells us that uh there's an organic here, so when it comes to planting, you have to um, I can bet. So a little bit, if you can move to the next slide up, Michelle. Just to give. Little picture, yeah, this, this is good. So, uh, what we're proposing is to take native plants as life logs and plant them where we can. Uh, amongst the breeding, what that picture in the lower um. Right is uh what those plugs look like when they're on the bottom of the site, picture on the lower. And the lower the right, it's what the root system is associated with, that's native grasses, et cetera. So you can see there's a lot of things growing below the surface, you might think, so. Planting up on uh, not as degree. Minimal, no nutritional nutrient down, uh, you can sign up one little bit more. Uh. I thought this was interesting, and this will kind of explain all of it. So easily remove the instructions and hold that thing. Key is trying to beat that in the basis in the first three to five years while we're trying to get the. These dirty types going and uh, I think we got, that could be a lot of things out of season. We gotta see the temperate cover, you gotta burn it at uh some. Unuh predictable times of the season, you may have to use some selective clearing and some. So for those first three to five years, nothing's. There for, it's just trying to bring this infrastructure back in. In the uh left side of this page. You can see lawn grass, you know, sure, the root system is there. Reason why we didn't go with definitely bluegrass lawn types is because it's cool streets and so what that means is. In the spring, that's cool, it's dry, it's summer, it's hot, it's warm, and fall, which is going there. So to keep it on, learn to see in the summer, you got here. But with the plants that were suggesting for ground, you want to keep. Um, chemical fertilizers, you know, what they put on these cooties and mounds, ill-advised. Uh, the organisms in the soil, so we got this sterile soil, and we keep feeding it. Then herbicides, you know, uh. I think you see these lawn services, but it's spread by one, it's a little flag up there, so you don't want that in the lawn. That's because in that different form, when it's on the plant, those are nerve injuries. So they don't have a lot of new cheap life and nerve gas for your pets, so anyway, uh. Get rid of all that stuff, use additives and uh hopefully it comes together, but there's a lot of management to give it all.
Oh, thank you. That's good for now, probably have some questions later, thank you. Yep.
Yeah, it's a really brief, uh, Joe Maynard, Washington Engineering, uh, just want to reiterate, you know, that we're working with. Which I'm calling our Warman and the Fire Department on our reviews, um, we went through the letters that we received, I won't go through one by one, but.
Yeah.
Uh, we did go through it and we didn't see anything in there that would cause any issues, so we'd like to move forward. Uh, just a couple of things I will point out, um. There's one item regarding the uh walkway that's coming down the driveway and we put, um, we added a separate. Detail in the package tonight, shows the crosswalk and we added the sidewalk. They would connect people from the front to the back patio, where you know, open space area and get them there safely and adequately. Um, and then we also provided an extra detail on the cover sheet that shows the waivers. Um, but again, everything else is pretty careful whereas we do this project.
Great, thank you. I think that ends, that's, and probably the developer presentations, I think, okay, um, with that, the consultants, please, Megan?
Um, so I'm just gonna highlight how these, how their proposal has changed from the conceptual review to final. Uh, the number of parking spaces on the first floor of each building is proposed to decrease to seventeen spaces in each building. For a total of thirty-four interior spaces, the service parking is decreased to from thirteen spaces to eleven. Um, with all, with those changes, the other proposed developments still meet the minimum parking requirements. Uh, the depth from front to back of the proposed building has increased by one and a half feet and it's changed the placements and setbacks of the building on the site slightly. It decreased the front buildout and also increasing the total floor area, um. That proposed change to the minimum frontage buildout is estimated to be below the waiver granted in the preliminary P U D pro- process, preliminary P U D approval. So it's requiring um an adjustment to be made to that waiver in the final P U D process. And you'll have seen later in our review that we feel that that would be appropriate, an appropriate waiver to grant. Um, one of the previously proposed rain gardens is now proposed to be a decorative water feature. There are still rain gardens proposed, so it still meets that qualification for a P U D, um. A number of things have been added to the landscape plan in terms of plenty installation, de- date, dates, for yearly, skip maintenance, short. dates, first yearly, skip maintenance, shoreline stabilization, restoration schedule. Um, reintroducing native prairie to the stream embankment and cross sections of the water plaza features, front yard landscaping in the west branch of the milk creek. Also later in our review, we noted, um, some concerns about the maintenance schedule from our landscape architect in the packet. That was the supplemental packet that was posted today. We have our landscape architect look at it and, um, he communicated to us that, um, that seemed to be appropriate. Um, it wasn't his ideal scenario, but he felt that it would, it would be fine. Um, and then, um, also there's a single set of architectural drawings have been submitted. Previously, there were, what? There was one for each building. They seem to have different entrances before. We're assuming now the proposals for the buildings to have that identical architecture. We don't think that affects the quality of the submittal or anything that would have to deal with your approval. We just wanted to note that. Also, the size of the largest dwelling unit, um, proposed has decreased slightly to two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy square feet. And then wanted to see if there was anything else. We noted again that that, those, the forty-five spaces, um, there's now proposed forty-five spaces in terms of parking, but there's nothing. There is no outstanding i- items to be addressed in terms of, um, in terms of parking, um, we've asked for the applicant provided table of requirements and waivers for architectural regulations, which it was included in that, um, submittal that was in the supplemental materials, um, posted today. Um, we've asked that the applicant update the P U D agreement to meet the section provisions of zoning ordinance. Um, there hasn't been the opportunity to look at that if it's in terms of any recent metals at this point. Um, in terms of P U D qualifications, again, the, because the changes have, have been minimal, it still meets, um, the standards as it did in the preliminary and then also with the P U D standards. Um, and in terms of the things that we recommended the applicant provided, what was provided today, um, met those, um, the only thing that we, um, were concerned about, um, was those crosswalks, um, just to make sure that people could circulate safely throughout the entire site, um, and what was provided today seems to meet that.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, yeah, a number of, uh, recommended conditions from a engineering standpoint. All pretty technical nature, uh, as Joe mentioned, but working with his team to work out the, uh, finer details of that. Those are all underground structures that won't affect site layout, circulation, or anything else. So as it stands right now, we don't have any, uh, objects from a visionary standpoint.
Okay, so they all appear like they're, uh,
Resolvable.
Yes, exactly.
Without a Probably the most complicated is the watering under the river and running that between the bridge and blockman of the building. Uh, we've been working, we've been working on that pretty hard and I owe uh, the most conceptual drawing of that, but it is, it is doable. Right. It's, uh, just a little bit of challenge.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Uh, let's see. You want to summarize the fire review, Michelle?
Yes.
I think they had any Oh, it seemed like pretty basic.
Yep, it's pretty close to, uh, what the previous one is. They've addressed and they've, they've addressed, um, comments and concerns before. They've worked very carefully and closely with the fire chief. So fire lane, no parking signs would need to be, uh, uh, addressed on the site plan. The addressing, uh, address signage for each building, that's something we do during, um, zoning compliance and we do that with the fire chief as well. And then the future sprinkler alarm detection monitoring, that's all going to be part of, uh, preliminary zoning compliance in the building permit.
Perfect. Now, we have your report.
Okay, so, um, um, uh, Megan, Marcus and, uh, uh, fire chief all have their letters. They're all detailed. Um, and so it's, it's really fairly simple for you this evening. Um, there's a, you do need to, um, identify if the, um, the reduction in the building, uh, the front buildout does or does not significantly change compliance with preliminary P U D, P U D plan. That is a, um, that is a, um, determination you have to make as part of your motion. Um, and I believe Megan addressed this, but just for the record again, um, um, staff does not see this as a significant change. Um, you, as part of your waivers allowed the building, uh, frontage to things the interior, interior of the site due to the, um, to the shape of the property. So the, um, the additional waiver for that build out, building frontage doesn't seem to be significant, but that's a decision that the planning commission will need to make. The rest of the comments, um, uh, remain as they are. And then any, um, updates or responses that they've got in the supplement or whatever, they have not been able to be reviewed yet. So those would still be recommendation or those would still be conditions with Google. And we would take care of those, um, accordingly. If you have any questions about the planned unit development agreement, legal counsel is here on both sides.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so that wraps up our staffing consultant presentations. So, uh, repeating, we have a motion on page two forty-eight. Uh, again, just reiterating what Michelle just said, too, the only change really that we are making a determination on right now is the reduction of the frontage, uh, the frontage buildout. We say from forty, forty-three to thirty-seven. Yes, um, so, uh, with that, there's emotion. Question? Sorry, sorry, move motion help. Go ahead, please.
Based on the, uh, information provided by the applicant staff, C W A, O H M and E A F D and in accordance with standards in section nineteen point oh three E, the planning commission finds T P S, uh, P twenty-four dash zero, 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 one Chappelle condominium final P U D site plan dated March fourth, two thousand point four is in substantial compliance with the preliminary P U D plan. Revision dated September twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, which was granted conditional approval by the city council on November twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three. And continues to meet the intent of the P U D district and all development standards outlined in section nineteen point oh three through nineteen point oh five of the zoning ordinance. And recommends of the city council, subject to the following conditions, and there's one, two, three conditions with uh, a number of subconditions there, which I, which are, I won't read unless I
No, as, as noted on another report, we can And then that obviously indicates that you are okay with the reduction of the frontage from forty-three to thirty-seven.
Yes, it's mentioned in
Correct, yes, okay, so I make sure. Okay, so move help, your support. Work helps. Um, questions, discussion?
I've got a couple of
Yes.
One question.
Please.
It was one thing. Um, has to do with my read of the, um, um, the, uh, pre-removals. There appears to be a number of, um, trees to be saved at the, at the north end of the, the pointed end of the project. And yet under the list, those trees that are listed there uh, all say that they are four, most of them are four condition. And the note they have provided with that is that all trees that are on poor condition are to be removed. So there seems to be a conflict between the note that you have and those, and those trees that you have indicated as safe. And that's my question.
It
Am I misleading?
No, I think that's correct. I had, actually, you've had some of the same questions I had, so, um, it, it, I don't know if the applicant, if you want to respond to that. Basically, that was kind of my question, too, is a confusion over what's staying and what's removing, because as Mr. L said, there's a discrepancy on the plan. It says saved, but in the chart it says they're poor. I mean, I think, and basically, I, I know that some of the trees that you do have saved there, those are the kind of the, the one that's indicated as saved, but I think it's a cotton. Is it a white willow? It's right. You have it saved, but it's in poor condition. It's in really bad condition. I don't know why, I think that should just be removed and mitigated for in advance as well as those other trees that are in poor condition invasive, because it seems like we'd want to get that willow out of there next to the river anyway, and it's really dead, it seems.
The trees that are being saved on the plan are in that extreme north corner, which would be walnuts, nooks.
Yeah.
And cottonwoods are in extremely poor condition. But you, you had brought that one large cottonwood up before and that will
Okay, it does say save on this plan, though.
Yeah, we'll have to amend the plan and get that out.
Yeah.
The note underneath the list of trees that used to be clarified relative to the trees that you had marked as saved. It would appear they're all going to go away. They're all lousy trees and they're poor conditions. All of the cottonwood and, uh, um, other bases will go. It's, uh,
Okay.
Native hardwoods.
Yes. Yep.
We'll get that note.
Okay, as long as we can make sure that's clear. That's awesome. Uh, additional questions?
I've got a couple of comments.
Yes.
Um, one of them is, I mentioned at one point time earlier on, that, that the north end of the property, you know, pointed into, uh, of the property happens to be very, very in close proximity to the existing boardwalk there. And, and an observation that I made was that it seems to me that a connection could be made at that point. Real three to forty foot connection, as opposed to crossing the whole darn uh, the pre closer to the road. Uh, if anybody's ever looked at that one, just comment on that, so. Observation on my part. Um, and the second thing that I have, it's long, you'll bear with me, comment on is that the C W A report initially and continues to make reference to the science doctor Frederick Pelham, the black engineer who designed the biode my take on that. Before and now is that, that's a nonsensical comment. You know, important thing is that Frederick Pelham was the first black engineer to graduate from University of Michigan, not just a black engineer. And, and it's in their report, but it led me to come up with a suggested additional condition. So bear with me if you will.
Put in the microphone if you can.
Oh. Really?
I want to make sure that everything's caught in.
All right. I think the
Now people can hear me. I'm suggesting condition I. That the, the approval includes recognition in the form of a plaque or monument that states that the bell, that the Pelham condominiums were so named to honor Frederick Pelham, the first African-American engineer to graduate from the University of Michigan, who designed both skew arched bridges adjacent to the site. Something that recognizes the significance of not only um, your development, but the fact is where it is. And I'm, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me to even suggest a plaque or monument, but I think it'd really be good. You know, five years down the road, after this is, uh, building has been built, it's the Pelham and other than those of us who are familiar with that history, have no idea. So something there. And I know there's already a little, a really, I think, a really cool moni- um, plaque
Yeah.
up at the park, at the beginning of the park there, that I think the fourth graders did or something. It's really
Yeah, it's great.
Nice. But I'm talking about something a little more significant. So it's a suggestion and I don't, I'm suggesting it as a, um, condition, but that's up to everybody else.
Well, you, it's your motion, so you've added that as a condition.
All right.
Um, and
You know, it was
Sorry, did we have a supporter?
I think it was Tom.
Yeah. I, I wonder if that's the role of, of Dexter. It's, it's our bridge and, uh, you know, shouldn't we, uh, put that in as a recommendation to council to fund something like that rather than, um, ask the applicant to pay for it? It's, it's the bridge that's, that's really the thing. And you, you have a good point about the naming of the, of the development, but it's the bridge that's the thing and and, and, and I guess I'm, I'm kind of surprised there isn't like some sort of plaque on a bridge or nearby already, but it seems like that's, that's more like the city's, uh, responsibility, I would think, than the applicant's.
Well, okay, so I think, uh,
That's a good point, I'm
Yeah.
Well, first of all, um, it's both bridges on either side. It's very, very, very important.
Right in the middle.
And I really commend the developer for what she done with the buildings, with the arches, things like that. And then even the name, I love it. So it's a suggestion. Maybe it can't work in the this is I've got it working through, so.
Well, I think that that's a great, sorry, yes. Sure, after yes.
Comment on that, yeah.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, so just so you all know, we've thought about that prior to this coming up. So it's not like it's some foreign idea. I think rather than making a condition of approval, um, we, we would agree to be part of that and do, do that, whether it's located on the property or some location agreed upon. Um, just putting it out there. Does it have to be a condition of approval or is it just something we can do?
Okay, well, you know, okay, um, so, yeah, what are your thoughts to that? Cause you did add it as a condition.
Do you want to make it a recommendation instead of a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Better way to do it.
Yes.
I would support that.
Okay, so, um, cause I, I think that's a great point, Chad, that you bring up about the, the name and that, right, that we all know what it is, but five, ten years down the line. So something on that site would, or near it would be great because it's right in between those two. So it's perfectly okay. Yes, do you have another comment?
We were just thinking, maybe it's an actual plaque on the corner of the building, the one that's, you know, it's right as you walk across.
Right, and I think something on your right is, is that informative one that's overlooking the part that has a little bit more text. I think again, what just on your building itself and the residents get to know, okay. Um, all right, thank you. So additional comments for now on that?
No, that's all.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I lost track. I can make the original motion. I usually don't edit down. That's what I thought. Okay, and who supported?
I did.
You did, okay.
I, I
Okay, yes.
I guess I have a general comment. I'd like to congratulate the applicant for working so well with the community. Um, uh, to pull together, which is really, I think, a terrific development. I just want to say to the, I, I, my own personal opinion about how this has all unfolded is we as a community, I think, should um, be careful what we ask for sometimes, because we, last time we, when we worked on this ordinance and the master plan, we talked about how much we love density. How much we love density. And once we saw density, uh, everybody got kind of excited and, uh, kind of like, well, not that much density, you know? And, and, and kind of wanted to pull back into something we're more familiar with and we could point to in town and and say, this is what we have and we like that and we want more of that. And I, I think that, that's, you know, something as we work, work on the master plan and, and other zoning changes in the future, I think we should really, uh, think more about, um, what, what our priorities really are. And, and once we commit to those, I, I, I'd love to see us maybe embrace them a little bit more than, um, be afraid of them. So not that we're afraid of them, but you know, you know what I'm saying, that, that we become hesitant to, to, to support something we, we we don't see in the, in the city today. So that's my only comment.
There's no, yes.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for those comments, Tom. I agree with those, um, and what you discussed about monetization. Worrying the project, I said, um, when we approved the project that I was going to be especially paying attention to the bank restoration of the creek. And I'm happy to see this revised plan here in front of me today because uh, it takes care of a lot of the things. We're talking about three to five years. Um, the revised plan talks about the restoration and what that's Um, the revised plan talks about the restoration and what that schedule looks like accounting for the three to five years. So. Thank you for getting that. Um, you did have. Uh, some discrepancies and law mores, so you took like care of everything that we had in that plan set. But what I want to ask and note for the record that um. I think Carlisle Wortman's, when we're referencing Carlisle Wortman's plan. They reference the duration that's on the plan and that. I want to make sure that it's the durations that are on the revised plan.
So we haven't had a chance to review it. And so. We will. Um. But this motion doesn't take into account any of that.
That's a head.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask the applicant what you see as success with the stream restoration? We have a great plan, but it doesn't. Quantify what success is. It says, hey, we're going to do this plan. We're going to do it for this many years and then. What? What's success?
Standing Prairie. Takes time. And. The difficulty with this site. She got extreme conditions, so we've got to overcome things that you wouldn't normally be addressing. So. What we tried to do was because. I don't know if I'm going to be around there for five years, but to have a clear delineation with what will be done. To try to maximize the development of those prairie grasses and forests and sedges. So beyond. At the end of five years. I mean, it's hard to say it will be this way, but. My forty years of experience doing this. Tells me that then that five year period. We should have a totally stabilized river. I'm sure. Is that kind of getting to the answer, boy?
Yep, um. One, one last question. Um. So this gets. Establishment twenty twenty nine. Is there going to be any monitoring of this by the HOA?
It has to be.
Well. I what I say is. My suggestion for the future of control A is. Always. Let the maintenance management of the settlement, whether it's water line. Always told me whatever. So, uh. What I would suggest is that there is a. Maintenance plan for this established area on shore. Down to. Uh, well, it doesn't mean bird area here because what happens with burning. Is that um something it's selective to promote grasses, so you don't have to buy. Be back like that and you will burn it. So. There has to be a management plan for. Um. Like.
Would that be appropriate for the master D?
Mm hmm.
I.
With the same.
Think so, yeah.
Um. Stormwater, man, it's hard.
Right. I'm I'm just, it's a special area. It's a special part of, for me, part of the P U B and so on, so I'd like to make sure that we. Um. Let that get into the master Ders.
Josh Bloom, part of the development group. Everybody. Um, yeah, the developer can build that into the HOA uh requirement and the landscape uh maintenance budget over time, so. We can, we can absolutely add that in. Our attorney, Julie Denver, who's on, is listening now and. Um. We'll ask her if it's better in the condominium bylaws for the master D, but we will put that in there. It'll likely be a landscape plan like. Uh, weeding out invasive species is my experience of those areas. So.
Thank you again for considering that and for the revised plan.
Thank you.
Thank, yes, Michelle.
So their attorney did have her hand up at one point. Um, should we find out if she has anything to add or no?
I mean, I don't think we necessarily need the attorney's opinion. I I.
Okay.
I trust that it'll be, but thank you.
Okay.
Chad, did you have a comment?
I have one additional one that I overlook here and that was uh, I appreciate. On Mr. Sosnowski's uh presentation with the native grasses and everything else that supports that. I think it's, I think it's good, but you made a couple of comments. Um, that the that the plantings would be. Made amongst the debris. And I would think, why? Why not get rid of the debris? Um. That's there and um just plant.
Well, it's concrete. Pretty and. You know. It's actually clean. It doesn't have asphalt in it or anything like that. Uh, so it would interact with the. Soils that are sandy. Um, it's just like big boulders. To remove it. No one really knows to extent that stuff afar back into the site it goes.
No.
And I think it. It'd be a more appropriate approach to just. Plant amongst it. Just leave it there because that actually provides stable shoreline in case there was some. Maximum flood or anything. Now, whereas when you pull that out and you you've exposed it to all kinds of bad things happening, so. That that's.
So with that though, sorry, could you stay up for a second? Because with that then, um, I I had some of the same question and I realized. The intent of it's right. It's acting as basically a kind of a retaining boulder wall, that concrete in place, but did you say you're you're going to have to supplement that with soils, correct?
If we're closing in plan on landscape plan is for. Uh, planting the life plugs with. Or um compost. That's not. Taking all the debris, the concrete debris out, spreading compost. It's. Just where we're planting plugs, putting compost so we can have some organics like in.
Yes.
Um, regular low me top soil, only five per, if you get five percent organics, then if that's high. We're not even get close to that. We're just putting a little bit of organic material around each of those plugs and that actually happens to be. The standard, so the Washington Water Resource Commission. You know, to plant that way. So.
Okay.
And we've done. Uh, several of their projects and. They're really successful, so it's proven to work.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Sosnowski, if I could follow up you.
One more question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um.
Somebody got a chair.
Yes, there.
The debris that's there, I have no idea what it looks like, but is it broken? It's an unsightly debris. In other words, will there be selective removal of stuff that really? Sticks out or is it always going to be that way?
Mostly, well, it won't. Stick out, you know, even when. The prayer is established and it's burned. I don't think you'll really notice. It. But. If you looked at those pictures that I threw up there. Um, surfaces are exposed. It's not like whole sections walls are protruding out of the slope, so I. It it's not an aesthetic thing. It's just a functional.
So, um, do you have anything else? A couple of things I'll just, you you can sit down, but I was going to comment on that. Um, so. Uh, I echo what the Thompson said previously about uh, I committed the developer on this because it was, I was very pointed in criticisms and I think. This project really turned out great. Um, and you came back with. On plan. On this plan with items that you said you did, which isn't always the case, or it's that you said you would rather. So, and again, I I. I'm focusing on that creek restoration there, that bank restoration, because that was a critical point for me. And I think um. You, and and I know it was also a a kind of a flashpoint for the for a lot of the public as well, because it's it's tree right now, but. But I think for most of us that that know the vegetation, it's all junk and it's. We need to get that out of there. So I think this is a huge benefit. I think this is almost part of a public benefit is that that restoration along there. And again, I think the fact that you're using all these plugs as well as not just seeding that, that's huge. That gives that a. From somebody who started a prairie in my backyard and it takes a while. I know how long it takes to get established, so the plugs give them a huge step up, so that's. Very commendable. And I think though, I do have the concerns about the management though. So I want to make sure that that's either in the development agreement or the HOA, because we all know this is going to look great for five, six years, but then homeowner. The developer, you guys will be gone, which, you know, is part of the business. I get it, but the homeowners are going to start spraying it with. Camelon and everything else and it all looks unnatural, you know, so that's. I think we really need to emphasize because that's a key feature of this and that's also. Part of that leads into the natural or natural feature of our river that we like, so it's it's essential. It's not just. Um, it's not going to look silly at that point, and I think it will look great eventually. Um, the other other thing is that uh. Oh, the public access. So I I noticed that um there's a comment in here regarding allowing public access across. The to the sidewalk of the site. Did I read that incorrect or? Oh, I thought there was a comment in here that they were going to allow public access or that there was an easement on the front of the park.
That you've got the fire department's public access. It's an emergency access.
Okay, but.
It sounded like they were allowing that. People would be able to utilize that.
Okay, is, yeah, I, well, but that's not the, yeah, I see them shaking their head, so. I think we're confusing public access and fire department access.
Fire.
Right. Okay, so that's. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I I think the last time we all met and and when we spoke about this specifically, it is a private property. It's going to have an HOA. It's the public access. We didn't, we we didn't want to grant some sort of a pathway.
Yes.
Because of liability and other things.
Yep.
That are related to the HOA.
Yep, no, I get that exactly, and I kind of understood that, but I was confused by that one comment, so. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Over.
Man, I think one of the things you were considering was they added a crosswalk to the plan. Which gave access between the buildings, if I'm not mistaken. That's what the access is.
Oh, okay. Then that's.
Then that's.
Okay, that's perfect. Even better. Thank you. Yes.
I was just gonna say, that's the detail that we added in.
Yes.
Back it.
Okay.
That crosswalk and the added sidewalk.
And then.
So they could get through.
I saw it. I like the crosswalks. Good site circulation. Thank you. Okay, um, that's. That's it from me, so are there any other? Um. Okay, seeing on, could we have a vote call vote, please?
Roberts.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Hill.
Yeah.
Cool.
There's each concern conditions that were going to be added.
They they are. They are adding unless we.
When they parted.
Okay.
Yes. Where I. They were at, I mean.
No, since Chad made the motion, is he okay with the amendment? He added things that you put in.
Yes.
And Tom, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it was a recommendation, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's the right one. Okay, so going back to your vote.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
We took a five minute break.
Sure, with that nine ten, let's take a five minute break. Recommit at nine fifteen. It was perfect. Yeah, two more.
Well, and that looks different.
When I'm confused, that looks different than this. But I'm confused because.
In this layout, so we have, you need a hallway.
But but this is different than what was in the pack. Yeah, that's what I'm confused. Well, but what you just showed me that.
Doesn't look like the front.
Well.
Looks like a school.
I agree. I I agree, but. Well, we'll get, we shouldn't debate it too much, but yes, I know. I I write that. I don't think that's a problem. You know, I don't want to discuss too much.
That's that's an illusion. That's not what people are coming in.
What some people might. But but I'm not.
That's.
The.
If it was downtown, I would agree with you.
Well, true. Right, that is different. And I think they need, it's going to be a really multi.
This is how you end up with like uh Ford Road with uh acres of spandrel glass pretending to be a face in the road.
Well, you and you're right. I had, I made that mistake with the the speedway at the corner of Miller Maple. And now there's that of the spandrel glass on the side. I want them to put windows on there.
What's going on where uh um. Huron and uh Jackson meet that little triangle with. What is that?
I don't see anything when I drive by. They it was it was supposed to be rehab. But.
Really?
Yeah, they waves. Seated.
They left one, two walls off.
Is that a gas station somewhere?
So I don't know. I wasn't working because it's only done through building permits. I didn't have it, but yeah, from what I talked to the zoning guys, they um, they want to, they're going to put pumps back in there. But they want to have a convenience store. So, or convenience store, but with gas, so. I. But access is tricky to the site.
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't go in there. Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a problem. Interesting, yeah, I I. Because I'd say the it exceeded seventy five percent of the value.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's like kicking.
I remember. A Comcast building, we wanted on the industrial, we wanted to add a a that pre engineered, then the building, we wanted to add a best. They're like, oh, that that triggers type of.
Wait, which?
Adding area.
Yeah, well, we 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 have loosened the standards. We're loosening. It's going to be council regulated. I'm surprised if we're even going to say. It's like anything will go to finite conditions or a couple of years. I mean.
It's really a fire rate.
I mean, that's, you know, because by say, well, you don't have to send any site against. Only have to have uh only reason and things, so. But I think that. Mostly good, but yeah, but but they're also. They're putting in a new wave, but they're also struggling with this. It's. They don't have these enjoy. So.
Is that a school? Those people. Like for us, so I'm a little. The generator. To run and follow electric link is massive. It's the the enclosure. That's what Ted called them. It's over twenty, like twenty four feet longers like that. It's, it's, I think it's the biggest generator we've ever used. There's this like pervasive line. This is just trying to, you know, pay us some money on it like it's a real. And it's right here. They told us. You don't know what you're talking about. You don't understand your business, I mean.
Hey, just.
I know you can't.
Okay. All right, everybody, back order. Okay, reconvene, please. Oh, nine sixteen, I was gonna, sorry. Okay, so. Next up, we have the Dexter Senior Center, fine site plan. Review. So do we want to have the applicant go first? Okay, applicant? Please step forward. State your name.
Uh, Steve Brower, David Brower Company. Oh, yes, I'm here. Representing or working with the senior center on this project, so this is. Obviously, the area that we're discussing, it was. Approved in the overall plan with the wellness. It was approved in two thousand twelve. And then in two thousand thirteen, we added. Twenty thousand square foot building approved with. In this exact same way. At this time, the seniors are looking for a ten thousand square foot building, so that's the. That's the basics of it. They will um. They'll own this piece and all of this and the furnace building or. This will be a separate lot. They're, they're working with the city on the revised condominium documents to make that all possible so that. The attorney, they're going back and forth on that. I expect that will take a few months to get resolved. Way it goes, but um. It should be uh. It should be usable. We also have. Two elevations for you to consider this evening. This is the. This is the elevation. This is the.
Yeah, that's.
This is the basic elevation. I don't think some of this doesn't seem quite right. But it's a basic idea, so this has a pretty smaller bit of here and. There's a, this is the second elevation. So this one has bigger glass on it. There's another elevation, which I don't know where that. That has smaller glass, which is the elevation of the senior. Who may prefer to have.
That's it, but just not in color.
Yes, that's it, just not in color. So thi- this is these elevations, we can't see them all together. The primary difference is on the left elevation. The windows are somewhat smaller, but it's much more. In keeping with the size and scope of what the Dexter Pharmacy Building was when that was the pharmacy building, and that's. This building is modeled after to try to keep it consistent with the other buildings that are on. Any questions?
Well, we probably will have some, but for now, that's good. Oh, we'll have some. We won't disappoint you.
Yes. We're we're willing to put in some extra ones for trikes.
Yes, with the trailers behind them.
Batteries power bikes.
They will. They will, e-bikes are the thing. Okay, uh anybody else from, or no, I guess anybody else from the developer team now or no? Nope. Okay, that's good. Consultant. Megan, please.
So I think you have a fair idea of where the site is and um what's proposed. Um just wanted to note that community center is listed as a permitted use in the. Baker Road boarding or something, I think district. This is in the farm-based district, so it's a single-use building. It's a permitted building farm on the tights. That's I type up on a corridor street. Um so there. Sometimes there are special approvals for buildings or uses, but not in the states. Everything is a permitted user permitted building. If you look, everything surrounding it is bigger work corridor either zoning or um. Future lane use separate to the south and to the east is public or VR two um with uh. With the schools and and houses to the rear um and then um to the west is um also public facilities. In terms of setbacks, um everything needs except for two things. Um the front yard setback, um we want a minimum fifteen feet is required. Um so deviation would be needed, um and also deviation on that maximum frontage. Frontage build out, a minimum of fifty percent is required, forty-five percent is proposed. Per section eleven point oh three E, the city council upon recommendation of planning commission. And grant setback deviations, um so for that front two percent back and the frontage build out, which means that's a. That's a relationship of the front setback, um under the following circumstances. The deviation will not adversely impact public health, safety and welfare. The deviation maintains compatibility with adjacent uses. The deviation is compatible with master plan and in accordance with the goals and objectives of the master plan and associated sub-area and corridor plans. The deviation will not adversely impact essential public facilities, services such as roads, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, police or fire. Greenage systems, repeat refuse disposal, water and sewage facilities and schools. The deviation will be in compliance with all other zoning ordinance standards. The deviation will not adversely impact uh any onsite or offsite net features. And as proposed, the building needs the dimensional standards of the zoning. Ordinance. In terms of those two deviations, we offer the following, that the minimum front yard setback. It is um in keeping with that of unit three, the of Dexter Town Center condominium. Um they were approved before the form-based code um was applied to the bigger reporter, and we feel that that meets the standards. Also, in the builders, the 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 building, minimum building, the frontage build out. Um we agree with the applicant's statement that that's limited by the existing building unit sizes and detention basement. Basin, um and so again, feel that that it meets those standards. In terms of building design, those same deviations aren't. Available. For the zoning ordinance, then those are not things that you or the plant or the. You as a planning commission or the city council can waive or deviate from. If they need a deviation from those, we go to the zoning board of appeals. Um and we've noted several, some of those which do do have neighbors. One is that. They need to have a primary building entrance that fronts the public roads. Neither of the proposed front elevations have a building entrance to Baker Road. Um each. Each building has a well-defined entry sequence for pedestrian and vehicular uses from the road, and so both pedestrians and waters can easily. Easily find that primary entrance from the street. Um so when you look at that design, you're likely to think about. As proposed, if you were walking down Baker Road, can you easily find the entrances and how to get into this proposed senior center? Also, fifty percent transparency for all sides of the building facing a public right-of-way, so that. Side that's proposed to face the public right-of-way is a twenty-six percent transparency. There are opportunities to have that um transparency waived um with permanent art or the inclusion of outdoor seating. Between the building and the primary front lot line. Um future art is noted on the eight-foot brick screen wall facing Baker Road. However, as we've noted in our report. You look at the landscaping plan, there's some aggravated bushes in front of that screen wall, so if there's art on that, we couldn't see it. Probably that things were moving fast and there wasn't necessarily coordination between the two. So if you're looking at that public art as a waiver for the transparency, then we would ask that those bushes be removed. Um so they don't screen the proposed mural. Um also, the two elevations submitted, we felt that the elevation on the original site plan, G P two point one was better in terms of. Meeting that design requirement, but again, lacks that primary entrance. Um in terms of natural features, there's none really on the site. Um there are. Two trees located in the shared driveway that are proposed for removal. Um we don't have details on those plans, so in terms of. From landscaping, if intervention is needed or whatnot, we don't know because again of uh the lack of detail. However, when you look at the um landscaping plan overall. Um again. On that brick screen wall, if it's proposed as art, you could look at it as that is a separate thing. But if it didn't have art on it, it violates the minimum, the maximum height. That's allowed for events um or a screen wall, which is six feet. In terms of parking, um actually, I'm going to defer to this annual on that because there seems to be some. Discrepancies about whether they've landmade things or not. They're basically, they're asking for a waiver. What that waiver is, is contention on whether those landmade spaces are um part of the proposal or not. Um and then also um. And you can make those findings to weigh those based on shared parking, which is. Likely on the site, and it was originally designed for that. Um in terms of loading spaces, based on the square footage in this and the requirements of zoning ordinance, two would be. Required, none are provided, but again, section five oh nine A allows the planning commission. To review those loading space requirements, um when it finds that no loading spaces required to accommodate the specific characteristic. Characteristics of the use in question. The only other thing we noted in the site plan um that should come to your attention. Is that the wall signs of approximately forty square feet are shown on the front, the west and the rear, the east elevations. A sign permit would be needed for those um and an individual maximum of forty-two square feet. So it seems to me that we don't have the exact dimensions. The applicant should either provide those to my point of the proposed signs. When you go on the site plan, that signs will be applied for under a separate permit. We have four items um basically which I've gone over um that we noted that um. You should have information on before you review, um and then also if the combined site plan was to go for as presented, the planning commission. Should make deviations on, should make. Determination on the following, a deviation for the regular setback, a deviation for the minimum front yard frontage build out. A determination by the planning commission whether the public art proposed warrants a partial waiver from the transparency standards. Um and findings on peak usage or customer visits to two or more uses of the site for a parking. As well as waiver of the loading spaces.
Hey, thank you. I'll probably have some questions for you later.
Uh from an engineering standpoint, um the site was master planned and designed. With this outlaw in mind. The proposed building is actually slightly smaller than was originally accounted for in the stormwater design. So that's a good thing. Uh but if you look in in your packet, I think it's right after our report. We did do a field inspection, there's some pictures with some notes on there. The existing pond is depending where you're. Going there between a foot, a foot and a half sediment buildup. So it doesn't have the original capacity, uh so. Uh should be a requirement uh that basically be one of the first steps uh during construction is get that. Pond system returned to. It's original design intent. For utilities, there is water and sewer already stuffed out. Uh for the building on the north side, so that makes those connections pretty easy. We did have a a note, uh the kitchen is proposed. But it was some discussion with the applicant about what exactly the use that would be. Uh what from the D W's perspective, if there's a kitchen, there's a potential for grease. Um we're asking for the grease trap separator to be. Installed uh in this direction. Maybe my in the loading um. You know, there's the the whole side is called loading space, but there's also, you know, if if you were to. There there might be um some value in having delivery loading. Uh so even if it's just a parking space that's signed appropriately, so I would consider that. Uh when you're thinking about getting more information from the applicant on their specific use. Uh the only other comment I had was the uh. Egress door on the north side of the building. And it opens up into a, there there's no safe egress away from the building in an emergency situation. Uh there's a block wall there, uh there's some significant grades, and the door actually opens out and kind of. Nowhere to go, so we'd ask them to look at that. They're gonna, they're successful means a degress out of that uh side of the building. Which may change depending on what happens with the other uh. That's it, engineer, you know, be your questions.
Great, thank you.
Then you have.
We have the fire, fire, you wanna summarize up the fire review?
Okay. Um again, the fire department comments are all things that would be taken care of. Um with the revised site plan, the the parking lanes, fire lanes, knox box. Addressing sprinkler alarm monitoring, and then future expansion of kitchen area. To include, uh is that gonna need a stove and exhaust hood? Those are things that get done. Um when they come in for preliminary zoning and the building permit.
I'll bring your presentation.
Okay. So as Megan had said, the area with height setbacks, um that's a deviation that you are able to. Uh recommend um. Uh approval of to city council that would be going from an eight foot. To a fif- or from a fifteen foot to an eight foot. And likewise with the front build out, um going from a required fifty percent minimum to a forty-five percent. Uh build out. The partial waiver for transparency is something you'll have to discuss regarding that public. Art, because as Megan said, if you've got a wall and then you've got the landscaping, how are you gonna see art? Um so that's something for you guys to discuss. Uh the waiver from the loading space um is something you have the ability to grant as well or make the recommendation to council. But per um. Uh the engineers' comments. You might want to make sure that um a parking space or two is identified for delivery, whether it's Amazon, et cetera. The building placement and orientation requirements um aren't. Something that you have the ability to waive or recommend to city council, so um. The the applicant would need to make a decision whether to revise the site plan to meet that standard. Obtain the variance from the zoning board of appeals. Um the stormwater runoff to the city engineer's uh point um needs maintenance. And doesn't have the capacity as it was designed. Um so. The um. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. The planning commission should decide um whether that cleaning out. And maintenance should be done as the engineer has recommended during the construction. Or do you wait, or do you require it to be cleaned out and repaired um before the building actually starts? Um the applicant does need to prepare, provide a revised plan that provides the tree removal details and mitigation. Excuse me, um in regards to the parking, the um. The approved plan that stamped approved. Um shows two hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces for Dexter Town Center. Twenty-three were landbanks, so two hundred and fifty-four were constructed. The um. I provided a breakdown in my report. For the parking based on the different buildings or units. The the plan that's been submitted shows two hundred and forty-six. There's no mention of the twenty-three landbank. It's unclear. Oh, it's unclear if if the applicant is seeking a waiver uh of eight spaces that. Haven't uh the eight spaces to allow two hundred and forty-six instead of the two hundred and seventy-seven. Or is he looking for a waiver, or they're looking for a waiver of thirty-one parking spaces to allow the two forty-six? Um and that's a question for them to answer. We've talked about the loading and storage and um. The applicant will need to submit a a shared parking agreement and then obviously address the condition or concerns of. Uh the consultants and DA F D. Happy answering questions, you got.
Thank you, and sure we will. Okay, so um at this time. Do have some motions prepared, um page three thirty-three of our packet. So again, this is a combined site plan, so if if we were to pass, we wouldn't see it again. It would go to council once. Any conditions were resolved. Um or it can be postponed as well. So with that, if there's anybody I would like to make a motion.
I want to make a motion. Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, C W A, O H M and D A F D, the planning commission finds. T S P C twenty-four dash zero 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 one. Fine, combined site plan for Dexter Senior Center, unit two of the Dexter Town Center condominium, two seven four zero Baker Road, oh eight oh eight. Oh nine four five five zero two two meets. The requirements of section twenty-one point oh eight and twenty-one point oh nine of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval. To the city couns- council, subject to the following, and I'm gonna read a couple. To the city council, council subject to the following, and I'm going to read a couple of these specifically. We have items A through. And, and I'm going to read a couple of these specifically. An eight foot front setback shall be allowed when a fifteen foot minimum setback is required. A forty five percent front build out shall be allowed when a fifty foot, fifty percent minimum front build out is required. See a partial waiver from the transparency, transparency standards in section eleven eleven B five D one D I. To allow public art as proposed by the applicant shall be granted. E, a waiver from the loading space requirement, or I'm sorry, let me back up. D, a partial waiver from the loading space requirement, section five point zero nine shall be granted so long as. One parking space is designated for loading. Seem appropriate. Then I want to. Skip down to F and. F, in order to accommodate the stormwater runoff as originally designated, the existing stormwater detention basin shall be cleaned and reestablished for the approved. Engineering plans for Dexter Town Center, including maintenance to the end sections of the swirl tank as part of the building development. Slash construction. And then I'd like to strike the rest of that after the or. And then item J, the applicant shall submit. I want to change J to us, there's a masturbate by law, so it's right. Will it continue to be? And then I want to keep eye as it is, that would show submit a shared parking with their section five point zero three.
Okay, who covert is our support, support Phillips? And I'm in discussion.
H isn't, is a either or, which one?
I'd like to have them have that opportunity to be involved.
So what did you do with H?
They, they could submit a revised plan showing the bridge stream wall does not exceed six feet, right? They could revise their plans as they go to. Council or. Pursuant to section three point zero nine D. Or the planning commission determines the wall at the proposed height is acceptable, is an acceptable alternative for transparency with public art. I see what you're saying now, that would create confusion. I would say that or. I, I would say that they could do that or. The planning, as found here, the planning commission determines the wall at the proposed height is an acceptable alternative to or transparency.
With what you did on C.
Right.
Are you going with the second half of them?
No.
So what?
We're going to strike the first part because we have taken care of this and. For the first.
Okay.
On this motion, so we're standing, the planning commission determines the wall at the post height is an acceptable alternative for transparency with.
Okay, alright, some progress of course, we are now in discussion.
There's another or here also.
You skipped that one, everyone.
Yeah, that's a.
He wanted you guys to discuss that.
That's a big one. So with, I mean, I guess I'll start with that one, because that to me seems. Like, do not pass go kind of thing, like. The plan doesn't meet the code. So I'm not sure why we're seeing it, if, are you going to get a variance? Are you, I mean, are you going to submit for variance? Yeah, okay, because I, I mean. It doesn't meet code and you have to get a variance. So are you planning to get a variance? Because even council can't approve this, so. I'm a little perplexed. Like, I, I mean, to me, this is, and this is showing me here that this is a discussion, I don't, I don't know how we could go forward. As a commission with this out there, because we have no idea what the building's going to look like.
They, they can either revise the plan or our approvals contingent on them getting a variance.
So he's, he's making that motion for them.
Yeah, okay, so I guess, so do you have any feedback to that? I mean, have you thought about the process of getting a variance, or are you going to revise the plan?
So background on this project, out of the generosity and the work of Congressman Dingle. Senators too shink. Representative Kerry Reingold, Representative Jennifer Kynon, they gave the district a grade. And the application to be able to put, build a senior center in community center. And it was specific to buy the wellness center and to create a separate senior center. So we are spending every dollar we have. The only way it's possible is to, is out of the generosity and the partnerships between five healthy towns. A R Brower, the Dexter Senior Center, et cetera. If the problem we have is timing, because the funds have a pretty tight timeline to turn this around. As far as an entrance from Baker Road. This building will be owned by the school district with a specific purpose of being a senior center. The seniors are not entering off of Baker Road. They're just not, they don't enter, they don't walk to the senior center now.
Well, I think we, I, I mean, although, like, wait, not.
Process wise, how long will it take to get a variance? Because we have a tight timeline and really restricted funds.
I, I guess I understand that, but there's no other option, I don't, we can't approve a plan that doesn't meet code without.
Nothing was originally approved without an entrance.
I know, I understand that, but right now, the code is what the code is right now, so. I, I understand that, and I understand that the intention, I know the timeline, I know the budget, but.
So the. I understand your concern.
Yeah, I don't understand.
And, and this is, this is a huge dilemma, so the. You made the comment that the planning commission can't and city council can't, that they got to follow. The ordinance. And you're right, technically. You can't, well, you can't and they can't, but council. Has always. Always has the. Authority to decide if they're going to follow code or not.
Okay, so I think.
And so. The, the only way that this gets to council. Because of the time constraint is your recommendation would be. To deny and then hope the council. If this is a no win situation.
I mean, there are, there are a lot of issues that are unresolved in this, we would never ever. There is a lot of, there, there's no mitig, I mean, the mitigation doesn't add, there's. And I understand the time concern, but we're still, you have to understand also, we're a body that look at many proposals, we can't. We have rules and codes and guidelines that are, need to be followed, and this flies in the face of almost every one of them on that corridor.
Mitigation was approved for the original building, so.
But I understand, but this is a new building. This is a whole, whatever was approved before doesn't matter, this is a whole new building and. I, in, I give the intent for the seniors, but. Again, we have to look at something for the whole community here too, and I think, but, but not even going into the design yet, I think, I, I, I'm struggling with. I, I can't approve, I can't vote to pass a project that doesn't know what they're going to do for the final design. I mean, I understand that council can approve it, and I know the budget, I know the timeline, but you also have to understand, understand her, this is asking. At least in my mind, a lot of. Unknowns here, even our planning consultant says the planning, planning commission shouldn't even review the proposal until these issues are addressed. So I just, I, I'm, I'm really stuck here and it's.
Were advised to bring me to you this morning.
Act, well, I.
Let's, let's.
But yeah.
Very clear. You're always advised to follow the ordinance based on the timeframe that you have. Whatever you had ready, you were willing to accept, review and bring. Let's, let's just be very clear.
But let's just, okay, I've said enough now, I think, let's go to another, or, well, I thought here, wait, Karen was first.
Question of, can, is there a way, we have the ability to, in some ways, we're. Define what the front of the building is. I mean, because in effect, those three bill, I mean, let's pretend this is built, these three buildings are all. You know, they, they kind of space into the middle of the complex.
No, they're not based in the.
They have.
I mean, that's what the code says is public right, so. But yes, okay, Tom, and then Tom.
I want to say that we have a solution already, I don't, I don't know why, what, what.
I guess.
We're saying it's a contentious approval and then go to it, I. I, I, I think that works perfectly.
Yeah, I don't know, I think, but yes, Tom.
I think by giving them the option, it is a contention of legal. They have the opportunity to make their case to city council. Or they have the opportunity to go speak with the Z D A and make their case for us. This is a property that was many years ago developed back when I was on the E D A. They didn't ask to be rezoned, it got rezoned, there's a steady way of circumstances like the detention basin. That prohibits some of the building and replacement and those kinds of things. We have a use that is, in my opinion, less intense from a parking, from a transportation and, and many of those factors, so. We're, we have the great creativity, let's say, to, and perspective to allow deviations and other things, we can't on this. So I'm fine, and, and I'm assuming that based on this motion we made, they're making some revisions to the plans. Based on the comments found in the letters and they're going to council to make their case. Hopefully with cleaner plans and I have faith that this applicant, the good member of the community, like. Senior center or school system and so on are going to make those edits and present their case to the board, I. I don't think they need, need an answer to that. But they have an opportunity here to make that case to one or both.
And it seems to me it's a much better design the way they presented it than it would be if it faced on.
Which design, so one other thing, which designer are we talking about?
I'm just saying that whereas the front of the building makes way, way more sense the way they've given it to us. Than it would to have it. They, just to stick with the letter of the ordinance. You know, it just does, I mean, if I were designing it and there was no ordinance, I'd go, oh, why don't we have the entrance that way? Where there's plenty of parking, you know, no tricky road. You know, configurations, you just, there's a ton of, you know, asphalt right there, you know, why not have it, you know, just. And so it's, the way they've done it is right. And I, I would, if I were. If it were me, I'd be rolling the dice and saying, I think city council would see it that way as well.
One thing though, that clarify, which elevation are we talking about? No, but there's two, but there is two west elevations presented to us, so we do need to make a decision.
I'd like to.
But it's the east one.
My motion to include the elevations which have the smaller windows.
The smaller, it's wrong, okay.
Yeah.
So wait, we have to have a note, but. I guess, do we have a notation on which exactly is that?
A partial, item C is a partial waiver from the transparency standards. To allow public gardens. So do we want to make a. Item O.
It is smaller.
Item O in the motion that. We find the smaller. Blazing window elevations produce.
Or maybe a date.
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be a date or a. I mean, this.
When you, when you say smaller windows, I know exactly which one you're talking about, so it's the applicant. Because the other one meets your ordinance. As far as the windows.
The other one meets it.
Oh.
So we're putting forward one that doesn't.
Yeah, it looks like.
This is the transparency.
March thirteen, two thousand.
Okay, that's, that's, okay.
Age what?
Three sixty three of our packet.
Okay. Yes, oh, I know, Mr. Manz, or I guess introduce yourself, please.
City attorney for the city of Dexter. I just wanted to make a couple of comments to try to keep everybody on the right path here. With all due respect to Ms. Arnold's comments, the city council cannot waive a requirement of zoning ordinance. Only the zoning board of appeals has the power to waive a particular specification in the zoning ordinance. If an applicant doesn't like the way and a zoning ordinance applies to their site, they can go to the zoning board. Appeals to seek a variance, or they could see that amend the zoning ordinance. It'd be a much more time consuming process in this particular instance. So I just want to let you know that the, you explained to you, I think, you know, appropriately. That there are certain elements of the zoning ordinance that the project that has submitted does not meet. But they can be deviated by the planning commission, as was explained by Ms. Mason Minak. That you could do, you could also have a condition that they, that you approve this subject on them going to get a variance. But I just want everybody to know, including the applicant, that the city council can't grant a variance, only the Z B A can. So if they think that they're going to go to city council and quote unquote roll the dice. I would tell them they're going to waste their time and money. I also would suggest to them that the zoning board of appeals process in Dexter is pretty darn quick. And I'm not sure whether they're going to get in front of city council before they would have to get in front of the zoning board anyway. Because my understanding is there are some revisions to the plans that they're going to need to make, even if they go forward with the city council. So I would just caution everybody here that it seems to me that unless they change the design. To put in a door that faces Baker Road, whether it's used or not. Is a different question, but the requirement is they've got to have a pedestrian connection between the primary road upon which the building fronts. And the building. What that door looks like or how it functions is not necessarily an issue that the planning commission. Needs to deal with, and there may be a very easy way that they could revise the western facade. Put in the door instead of the window, which would then alleviate that requirement that they go with appeals, but that is their decision. As far as design, timing, function, et cetera, but I do, do want to let everybody know. That if they stick with this plan, they're going to have to go to the Z B A.
Thank you.
Hold on, one question, Mr. Manz out. So as we have stated, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan. That meets the building placement and orientation requirements of section eleven eleven B two, B I double I, or. They can get a variance from the zoning board of appeals, that's still a correct statement.
I don't, the planning commission can recommend deviations to city council for the front setback, the front build out. And then the transparency requirement, the only one that I don't believe.
Yep, so.
Is the front door or the door facing. Because there's no ability for the planning commission to recommend a deviation there, and there's no ability of the city council to.
And we've done that with A, B, C. Done that with A, B and C. This one's E speaks specifically to that item that we're talking about.
I mean, you can recommend, you can catch most of the door contingent on them to address some bad issue. But I just, I just wanted to let everybody know that that issue is going to have to be resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Tom, can we make it? So that they put it in the door. I mean, that sounds like a simple answer.
But that's exactly what you're saying. Motion.
Well, we leave this, exactly as it is.
So, Tom, wait, wait. Yeah, yeah, sorry, wait, let's, let's focus.
So I, I'll give the applicant a little free non binding design advice. The, uh. The great room. Could easily have a door going into it, and during events, with a sidewalk to it, during events, it probably even would get used. People are walking, especially in that local neighborhood, and you're done. I, I'm concerned we're making a really huge deal out of something that isn't. And then the rest of time. It's up to you, my use door, that has Mr. Monzel noted, so. I, I hate to see your application be ravel or something that's, that's not really.
Yeah, I would say, uh, other than the front door issue, this is, seems like a great. Little building and a nice addition to the site. I'm glad to see it go in. And. It's got a good presence too on the street, you know, you've got this. This element in the middle. You've got this central bay and it's just missing that cherry on the top, which is. Somewhere to get in.
Which could they add, could you add back the, cause in one of them you've got. Well, I don't know if anybody else would like this, but that awning, on the one version you have at least something that. Calls it. Like, like, looks like a front element kind of thing, is. Can, I mean, can we add that in there, cause? Again, again, what I'm struggling with here too is I, I know the use and call that, we went through that, but. We're, it seems like it's still kinda turning its back, and, and there are people, there's seniors that bike all the time up and down there, and I know you've seen him, Steve, I see him bike up and down there. There are seniors that are gonna bike to this, the way that this is designed, they're only using motorized traffic. That's the only way you're catering to, yeah, like this design like here, and I think. I, I understand the building frontage and all those things, I think that we're good, but we still wanna look for something. To really be proud of as a community, so I agree in general, it's gonna be an asset. Um. I way support, I think it's gonna be a great element, but. It's, we struggle with, or I'm struggling with these certain items there. Um.
And there's a reason we, that that made it into the code.
Well, that's true. Yes, Tom.
An- another item for design, I would urge that the applicant, uh, get a three dimensional view of this. Cause the only other thing I'll say is these two raised areas are, when we call it raised bay. Are, are nice, uh, but they're flat and, um. They really should project away from the wall a little bit, even if it's a course of block that pulls them. All the way from the wall and the inside's flat. Because, uh. It's not gonna look like this, that like you're, we kinda think it's going to, um. If you see a three dimensional image of this, you'll see it's, it's, it is awful flat, it's a box. And, uh. Pushing that thing out eight or twelve inches. Um. Who's gonna analyze? More free, uh, non binding.
The, the wall is, is, why is there a wall going next to the patio? I asked that question, is there, cause it seems like. A really harsh. Run to address. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, again, I don't know why necessarily if the seniors would wanna sit right next to a wall, wouldn't you want at least some kind of partial vegetation or even a patio around the front?
My interpretation is this, it's screening your patio.
Do you, so, I'm Ron Miller, um, I'm actually chair of the facilities committee for the Dexter Senior Center. And on the board, uh, I mean, we, we discussed the wa- the wall, um. Uh, one, or if you're referring to the wall.
Yes, the extended wall that's, right, shit, I, I get it, it's probably for the traffic.
But it's, we understood, our understanding was that it was necessary to have something like that to hold that, that. From up that ground, and then we wanted to.
Wait, no, I think we're talking about two different things, sorry. I was talking next to the patio. Right. No, that's okay, I wasn't clear.
So, yeah, we, I mean. We have to have a, a, some heights of separation, we have to talk about barriers and, uh, other ways to. Improve a, a barrier. But, you know, attracting barrier, which I.
Right.
You know, artwork on the, on that, so. It, it was. We thought adding a, a, a plus, but also a safety, I mean, we would, because we had that height, we needed to have something to protect without. Necessarily fence that to build, so that is. That was the idea for the wall. Not to necessarily block off the patio, but al- also provide some separation of the patio. Uh, to the, to the front of the Baker. Running in Baker Road, but there we thought we could do artwork, we could do plantings, we could do other kinds of things there to make that and attract the space.
Okay, thank you.
How we dealt with it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we're just gonna say, we do patio walls all the time when we're trying to screen, um. Traffic from, uh, from a, a more intimate space, like, if people are gonna have like lunch there on that patio in summer. You're not gonna be, wanna look it out, car passing by.
So, I still have yet another comment regarding the land, the tree removal, that sidewalk along the entry drive, is there any reason why you can't just? Hug the, the building with that sidewalk instead of swinging it to the curb and removing the trees? Cause you say you're gonna relocate those, but I doubt it, so, e- even if they just shift them on the other side of the side sidewalk, why can't you just move the sidewalk?
The road, the sidewalk has to follow the road, otherwise the, the grades won't work.
Well, it's right, you just, I mean, I was just at it today, you could move it over five feet and it fits in between the retain. Cause it, one thing.
Won't meet the A D A. You see.
Okay, fine, fine.
That's why it's on this, that's why it's right next to the curb on the pharmacy side.
Right, on the pharmacy side, I, can you relocate the trees?
That's a higher according to the Z B A and the council, right, that's the federal government, so.
Okay, so, but if you move the trees, because again, another thing pointing to the design that I think, I want to make sure we all understand as a commission, the building is also elevated five feet above the sidewalk. Due to the grade, so that's a pretty. I mean, that's, and that's just like, so again, we're not just looking at a grade, it's out, so I mean, I think anything buffering into that corner, that's a really harsh. Corner that just sits there with a service door. If there's a way to, to design that, again, I even look at, even look at the subject property that, that. You work in, that, that doesn't have a direct entrance, but it's got a great corner front punch of frontage there. So I think even if you move those trees to help soften that a little bit along that area.
Well, the trees are in the way of the sidewalk, right, the sidewalk has to go. At the western end of it, it comes in off the drive approach, it has to be along the curve, as it comes on in the site, then it'll bend in.
Yes.
In line with the sidewalk that goes up to the wellness center.
But I'm saying, but can you, you said on the plan, it says they may relocate the trees.
Well, yeah, well, we.
Can you?
If we can save them, we'll save them, but if we can't save them, we have to replace them.
But you can save them. I guarantee you can save them, they're not that big.
If you dig them up, you pu- pu- put them in, you try to keep them alive, if they live, they live, if they don't, they don't, right?
But then you'll replace, right?
Be replaced, right?
Well, and they're pretty mature trees now, but I, I understand the sidewalk question that you answered, thank you, regarding the eighty-eight, that makes sense.
I have a question about the front door.
So.
This came up twenty years ago when we get the Blue Water Building. This was an issue way back then. I'm, I'm building, having doors in the front of a building.
Yeah.
So, middle of that building, there are two doors that go out on a concrete pad. There's no sidewalks either. So this front door to this building, which is a big debate here tonight. What is the access that's required to that door?
How about a central hall which connects the front and the back door?
It's not impossible. But then let, let Tom and then, uh, J, or chat, sorry.
Just read the ordinance, it's not a building code apart, it doesn't have to be handicap or any of that, so.
Well, that's kind of the point.
Yeah.
I, I, I see where you're going, right, do you want a useless store or?
Well, well, the point is, the, the big issue here is the layout, the seniors have spent a great deal of time with a great deal of people coming up with this floor. Right, so, while I appreciate Kyle's comment, right, that's not the direction.
But I also understand that people, but we have codes outside, what was designed as a seniors, we're not looking at the codes and the requirements that we have in front of us.
And that's my question, right, if we put a door on the front of the building, but there isn't a sidewalk to it, because that seems to me to meet the intent of the code.
I mean.
I wouldn't say read the ordinance, it would.
It could. Yeah, I mean, you would need a sidewalk for access, I would think, you can't have a door.
Well, it's not.
If you have a door for he.
It can't be an A D A sidewalk, cause you just.
Well, I don't wanna read that.
Same with the north exit, does not have to be accessible.
Right, no, it's, it's an emergency.
We're, we're mixing planning.
Right, but right, some of it.
Your architect can help you with the building code and, and read the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Right, but I mean, I think it would be a shame if, yes, you could put up a solid grade door, I mean, I think to answer your question literally, you could put up an ugly door facing that, that would meet the code. But I don't think you or the senior center wants to do that.
I'm talking about a glass door.
Right, so. Yeah, I mean, I.
No one wants a, no one wants a hollow metal door.
I think so, but I, I, that's what I would assume.
You know, you distraught on your walk past my eyes.
I don't wanna see that.
You might crash your bikes.
I'm gonna, pretty soon I'll be using that senior center. Okay, so wait, I'm on, cause we, it's getting late now, so, um, Michelle, did you have something to add regarding the door?
Megan was looking up in the ordinance about the door requirement with a sidewalk.
Okay. Anything you had there?
This primary building entrances shall run on public roads. Sidewalk, and then the next one that applies is building entries shall be located so that they are easily identifiable with convenient public access. Each project shall have a well-defined entry sequence for. Pedestrian vehicular uses from the building, from the roads of the building. And so. In all additional public entrances, the location must be verified, direct pedestrian access of the same quality and design as required for the main entrance. So.
Okay, so that's.
In that there needs to be a door that's facing Baker Road. And that it should have a defined pedestrian entrance to it. So. That, that, that could be a sidewalk key up to a door. Or it could, it could be that the sidewalk continues around the front, it goes as proposed. And then a sidewalk goes along the front of the building to wherever the front door, a, a door that's on the Baker Road beside it.
Okay, but I think one, but one thing I'll still remember that, again, so if we, if we pass this tonight, though, we're not gonna know what it is.
I, no, you're not gonna know what it is, but I would say that the motion that's on the floor covers both scenarios and meets the letter of the ordinance. Because it's either a variance or it meets the ordinance. It's not the ideal situation, but.
Alright, thank you, okay, sorry, anything, yes, chat, did you have a comment? And then Tom, hold up, did you?
Basic comment. The door issue can be solved.
Think so.
And, um. With a good architect, figure that out, I know you got a great change, so I can get to that from the sidewalk up to the door. Um, I strongly suggest that. That solution. Is figured out and don't go to Z B A at all. Um, that's, go to Z B A and that's a fifty fifty, and if you don't get. Don't get approval, you're gonna have to. Do with this anyways. So. I think. Figure it out. I think it can be figured out. And, uh, this one.
Okay, okay, so, eh, other final, oh, yes, Tom, did you have something?
I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, okay, alright, any other closing?
I have one comment for you, for the applicant's benefit, I think. Based on all of the discussion that's happened here tonight, looks really, really clear, is. The planning commission really did want to help and wanted to work with you. But they're confined by what the ordinance required. They waived the things that were asked anyway. And this one, they don't have that ability, so the motion that Mr. Covert. Has made. Is, is the best possible outcome.
Okay, reset. Anything else? Okay, then I think we're ready. Alright, yes, we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Phillips?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Kowalski.
Motion carries, motion carries. Alright, onwards to council.
Yes.
Okay, next item. Our last item.
If you would like to skip C I P, it's incomplete passage presented tonight, and I'll bring it back to you.
So does somebody have a motion to, uh, postpone this C I P discussion?
I'll make that.
And I will second it.
Alright, move, tell, support Roberts to postpone the C I P. Um, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, okay, I think that, and, well, I mean, oh, wait, we have another opportunity for citizens, I think. Uh, proposed business for. May, I guess, well, now we know we have the C I P, uh, Michelle, anything, it looks like a master plan amendment, is that regarding the schools?
Yep. Uh, yes. That's the public hearing on it. Okay.
Oh, yeah, yes, okay, yes. Like I said that, but.
And then you'll have the public hearing for the zone, so there'll be the two things, you'll be looking at the. Considering the master plan amendment. And approving and recommending adoption by council. Um, and at the same time, you'll do the public hearing for the zoning map amendment, and everything will be contingent on each other.
Right, perfect, okay, so that'll wrap up nicely, anything else? Okay, other than the C I P. Um, okay, so with that, Simmons wishing to address the commission. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support? Is there support?
Both.
Support, uh. A little sorry, my God, it's been a long night, okay, uh, all favor of German, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, guy meeting is adjourned. Yay, I think, right when it's pouring rain.
Good night, everyone.